Spectator.
Oh, good session.
I'm Mimsy, bro. You weren't here last. Word? What's that?
So.
What, Beni?
I'm not sure.
I don't know. We did that. And then more of us. I don't know. I'm going to. I don't know. Yeah. I think. Not enough. So.
I don't know. It's always.
But I thought. There was. What? What? Yeah. The boat. Carol. Carol from mom.
I'm glad you're here. I know. I have.
I want to better. I want to see this time. Yeah. Yeah. He's. Yeah. And mom. Yeah. And I. Five, five, six, seven. Yeah. Four, four. And two. I was. Well, it's. Chances go through that. That's all they get. Still there. Oh, what? I know.
Anyway, we. So.
First.
Do you need a room? They're very. Oh, yeah. You know.
Let's see. You see my best. In last. Yes. Serious. You're welcome. Maybe one of them. They don't hold the. It's true. One of the. Oh, yeah. So. Yeah. I want to go. This was. Outwork. I see. My. I don't know. Come here. Just come over. Well. Oh. The genius.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah. No.
I lost it. About you. And we're going. Well. She own that. Tell. She not a risk. That she should be. Be that. See. Not normally. Because it's. Not on. Because those. I got. I'm gonna. Very good. Hey.
Uh. Shannon was not gonna have a chair. So. Oh, she is. Thank you. Just like being. All right. Celebrity bartender. Duo.
That was. Yeah. That's a man.
Yeah. God. I love those guys. The winner in the table up there. Like a different. Here's something. To see.
On different planet. Oh, the show. It was good. Saturday. Love our band.
Yeah.
What's so cute?
Oh, Jake Williams.
Mary.
He was hilarious. He had me laughing till I'm.
Really?
It's coming.
That's great.
Yeah, it was a good show.
Yeah. He's a known.
What's that?
He's a known.
Oh, God. Doesn't she though? Yeah. Those two, two, two weekends in a row. Really, really good show. Well, it's about six oh one. So you have Shannon. Hi, Shannon. Don't say. Oh, there's Dana.
Hello.
Hi. Everybody plugged in and ready to go?
I'm ready.
Thank you. Before we get started, I want to practice by saying this is a fairly involved. Meeting this evening. It's probably gonna run. Probably takes a long time. So I hope everybody will be patient with us. And I will try to try and take a break about eight o'clock. To break it up. And Max was supposed to bring food. Don't see it either.
I have some snacks.
Enough to share?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh. It is six oh two. And I call this Leadville City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember for Denny.
Present.
Councilmember Graham.
Present.
I'm a member of.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Loretson.
Here.
Mayor from Tembre.
Here.
Here. Great. Thank you. At this time, I would ask for approval of the agenda. Is there anything I'm here that we need to change? Hearing none, I would entertain motion, please.
Councilmember Gency moved to approve the agenda. For seconds.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. All were in favor. Housekeeping matters. Anything anybody want to talk about quickly before we get rolling?
Mayor. And even. I walked on pine yesterday. If they're ready to pave, I would think that there's still a lot of preparation to do. To make sure that the paving is. Couldn't be as best they can. So just making sure there's a really good. Joining with the curb and gutter and someone to put to the sidewalk. Where there's a lot of just irregularities. I'm just curious. Who's responsibility? That is to prepare time for that type of paving? And if there's an update on paving?
There is. Thank you. We were supposed to have prep second for paving. It's supposed to be paved in the morning. But it's about a three day process to to pay Second Street. Then the next week, they will pay Sixth Street. And the week after that, they'll pay pine. Pine, as you observed, is not ready for paving yet. I'm not exactly sure what the status is. But Chris Wardrich is doing the prep on that street to get ready for paving.
Okay. I don't know if there's any paving prep on that street must start today. That said, there is some sections of pine that still have. Existing in the eighth to third block area. Two pines, five blocks. That appears that there's some old paving that's still down. Are they gonna actually? Please tell me.
Yes.
Take that up.
Yeah. That's all coming back.
All right. Is there any chance? To, for example. Like the post office. They have a pile of slag. The old door. Stuff is sitting there all broken up. And right there at that alleyway. It turns. Pretty bad. It just like, just goes from semi sidewalk to. To the alley and then no sidewalk. There isn't any chance that you can. Pave some areas to connect that block to the sidewalk.
I'll do a look at that. If you're talking about between fifth and sixth.
Fifth and sixth.
On pine. They're actually gonna put a pan across there. Across to that alley. Because the water's been flowing into that house.
Okay.
So we're gonna pan right there to direct the water away from the house.
Okay.
So I don't know what the plan is for the rest of that. I'll just have to check.
It's, I believe, if I remember correctly. If there was a half a block of sidewalk. We tied a whole block together. Sidewalk. There's just like a section. That doesn't have sidewalk.
Okay. I'll look at. I'd look at that area where they want to pan. But I wasn't paying close attention to where the sidewalk started and spot.
Exciting news, then, on the.
If it happens.
Maybe starting from now.
I know. We've been talking about for a long time. It looks like we're in a position to get something done. So I hope so.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Housekeeping matters? I want to mention that we had a city sponsored fundraiser for the Tabor Opera House Saturday night. Really went well. I haven't heard the final numbers. We had celebrity bartenders. Kathleen and Nancy. I'm sure they, there is lots and lots of money. But nonetheless, it really was a good event. So I'm very pleased we did it. I don't have final numbers on how much was raised. But it was nice. And we also put a new flag on top of the Tabor Opera House. Good stuff. All right. Anything else? Okay, great. Thank you. At this time, public comments on items not on the agenda. If anyone would like to speak, City Council. Please come up. Introduce yourself. Your address. And you have three minutes.
President Council. My name is Adam Ducharme. I'm the chairman director. We have two two nine West Eight Street. And I wanted to just kind of. I was hoping to get on the agenda for tonight. It sounds like you guys have it worked out for you. So I will not create that more excruciating. But I'll call it a pre-versed conversation. We are going to be putting on a film festival at the Tabor Opera House on October fifteenth. This kind of falls into that shoulder season for Leadville. The film festival is gonna be called Stories Worth Telling. It's a group of filmmakers from all over the mountain communities in Colorado. One of the films will be shown is called From My Window. It's a story about Melissa Simpson, who is a Leadville resident, Leadville native. She has cerebral palsy. And her story is that she always saw Mount Massive Mountain from her window. And always wanted to be able to climb it one day. And through the help of a team and an organization, she was actually able to go up. And I won't spoil the ending, but it's a positive story. It's. But also. All of the films kind of fall in that category. There's a lot about fly fishing, which I'm really well getting to reach the wheels with Tim on. But there's a lot of different films that hit a lot. Issues around diversity and inclusion, around access to the outdoors, things like that. So. I'm grateful that I've had some good conversations over the air about making this a city sponsored event. But I would like to ask the council's support financially. I look, I need somewhere between two to three thousand dollars in financial support. In order to basically take care of all the things that need to be taken care of to have a film festival on the Tabor Opera House. So I'm more than happy to go on to you. All the details, I will send you all the trailer so you can see everyone in the building too. Kind of why I need financial support. But I just wanted to use my three minutes to present on the concept. So.
Thank you. I would, I would say this. If you can give us some sort of a written proposal.
Yeah.
We can have it on the agenda for the next city council meeting with consideration. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who would like to speak that items not on the agenda? Anybody on Zoom? Not seeing anybody? Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I would, I'm somebody who. I am also the. Executive Director of the L T C. And we wanted to share with you tonight. We are officially announcing our live auction. I will say it's important for all of you, so this is a fire event too. So please join us. And we're excited that since our. Recurrent. Feed is called the movie investor number is roll with it. So it leaves the. I guess the net very well on some of the items, the up type of items that we're living right now. So that we can have a really awesome live auction. We're super excited to have that at the Tabor Opera House on October first. You guys will have a look there.
Thank you very much. At this time, we have our city administrator report. Laura, are you filling up to that or?
Yes.
You like to put it off?
No, I actually have a number of things to report on. So I will. Good. So a few things to follow up on from last city council meeting. You will notice that the stop, the stop sign that we discussed is up at the rail yards project. On the developer, John Lichtenegger sent me a sign, a photo of the sign up. And I went by and confirmed that it was up. So that should be taken care of. The. I've asked the police department to occasionally put the speed trailer up at Seventh Street to address the speeding concern. So hopefully that at least somewhat addresses that problem. Then the other issue is the base camp sign. And I've done some digging on that. And I need to do a little bit more digging and then consult with our city attorney. We had some brief discussions about it. And it looks like the, the sign was in fact up. The original one was up before our current sign code went into place. So then the question is, I need to research what our prior sign code said. Because if it was legal, nonconforming at the time that it. The sign code went into place. And they're replacing it with almost the exact same sign. It's potentially allowable. So it, it's a little more digging on that. And I realize that it is going up as we speak. So we are, I am hurrying as much as I can on that. Couple of other things to update. We are getting a cybersecurity analysis done for City Hall and the city. It is through a grant from the state. Homeland Security, Southern Homeland Security. And so it is a fabulous opportunity for us to get an analysis for free. The analysis should be completed by December tenth. And so council members, it's possible that you might be contacted by the consultant who's doing the analysis. There's no access to any of our systems. There are just questions about, you know, access to your particular computer. And then our own questions about the vulnerability of our connectivity with our system. So that is a great opportunity. I'm sorry. Did someone have a question?
No, I'm sorry. Just quit my.
Okay. And then we have an exciting announcement. We do have a streets manager who will start a week from yesterday. Tony, actually a week from today. Tony Medina is joining us from the county. We are very excited to have him on board. The timing couldn't be better with getting into budget season and a lot of things to prep for, for the winter. So he will be training with Jim Schneider for. At least several months. And then hopefully we'll be hitting the ground running. Just a quick update on the parklet construction. The construction is going great. The bottom line is they are still on schedule for a September thirtieth completion date, which was. Date that the grant money needed to be spent. So that is good news. My understanding is that a lot of the foundation is in. And then once that's done, things happen quickly after that. Community Justice Center update. We Chapin and I are now attending the executive committee meetings. So construction is due to start in April twenty twenty three with a projected opening date of November twenty twenty four. The good news is they did their, some of their environmental on August eighteenth and found no groundwater contamination. And it's, the project is currently in the schematic design phase. And so Chapin and I attended a pre-application meeting on August twenty second with the project engineers. Parkville Water District. And everyone is really working well together on this project. So things are moving along. And I know that you've all had a chance to meet Chapin Le Chance. He is our new planning director. And with the Community Justice Center moving along. The Rail Yards Project. And also with the policy advisory team recommendations. He has been busy, but we are so thankful that he is with us. And that he is able to attend some of these meetings and understand what. The things that I actually don't understand. So couple of things I would like to get from council. You may have gotten an email from Sarah Day asking about getting a date for the tour of the Tabor Opera House. We would like to do that so that new council members and old council members can learn what an important and valuable asset the Tabor Opera House is for. The city. And so Sarah said she will work around your schedules. So I would love to just take a brief moment and find if there is a date. I told her it's probably the easiest way to get dates from the counselor or during this moment right now. So that everyone can kind of look at their calendars and we don't have to do a long email string. Is there a date? That would work? Perhaps one date that we usually have a work session that would work that we. I think our budget work sessions don't start until the twenty seventh. So. Would the council be available? Next Tuesday?
This is Dana. I will not.
Okay.
Oh, this is Greg. I'm available.
I'm available.
Okay.
I think you're asking about the thirteenth. I'm available.
Correct? Yes. Okay. So that. We might just then, I'll let Sarah know that the thirteenth, the evening of the thirteenth works for a number of the council members. And then maybe for Dana and then Tracy did. I can't, I don't know if.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Two people.
Tracy said she's good. So.
Gotcha. There were just two people talking at once. That's okay. Great. So I'll let Sarah know that that, the thirteenth would work great. And then. We should also think about when would be good to do the work session for the sandwich boards on Harrison. And I think that isn't, you know, isn't super pressing. But when would be a good time to do? I think. I mean, I think would be ambitious to say that we could do it in an hour. So I think we should be realistic and try and plan a, a true work session, like a two, a two hour work session. So. When would be a good time for everyone to do that?
Well, in terms of Tuesdays, every Tuesday is booked until November twenty second.
Right. So I, what I'd like to do is just get a date on calendar for this. And even if it's after we finish budget process, because I just don't want to lose track of it. So I don't know what the. Bandwidth for council is to have a meeting every Tuesday from now until Thanksgiving. But that is your, that is your call.
That sounds like par for the course for budget season.
Yeah.
Lori. Question for you is how long should the paper? Field visit or visit tape next Tuesday?
So I, that's a good, that's a very good question. So I did a tour probably a week or two after I arrived and I booked an hour. And we could have gone longer. It is, there is a lot. So I think the best thing for you all to do is let me know your time limit. And I, Max, I think, I think I know where you're going with it is maybe the tour and then a meeting. If, if that would work for everyone, maybe an hour tour. And then we plan a hour and a half for the. Sandwich board discussion work, work session?
Works for me.
I can make that work.
I can make it work as well.
I'm the thirteen.
Okay. That would be great. And so as far as timing on the tour, what's the earliest time that anyone can? Or what would be the earliest time that would work for everyone?
We do have a lower median of four.
Okay.
So I don't think, I don't think we can do the Tabor Opera House tour until six would be the only.
Okay. Okay. So Tabor Opera House tours six to seven. And then we'll hustle everybody back. And we will do the work session seven to eight thirty.
If, if we were to do that work session, is there any way we can have snacks here? Because that is a four to eight thirty time slot.
You're right. That is true. Yes.
A lot of. Civil service. That requires.
The answer is we will make that happen next.
Any, I, any dietary restrictions?
Low and free.
Okay. Okay. Great. So. God, thank you very much for getting through that quickly. Then I think. The, let's see. I'm trying to look at my list here. We talked about grant writing at the goal setting and just wanted to let you know that. Couple of exciting things are happening. Our deputy city clerk is going to be attending a grant writing workshop to assist in that. And also she and I are pursuing some federal grant money for the transit project that we are partnering that with the county on. And the county, the county had a presentation at their last, or actually the, not today's, but the meeting before their Board of County Commissioners meeting. They had an update from the consultant and Farr and Peers. And the project is moving along. And I'd like to have the consultant come back and make a final presentation to the council. Right now, it's just a matter of the consultant is helping apply for, the county applied for a number of state grants. And federal grants. So it's just us gathering together enough money to try and implement it. So very exciting. The last thing is that you'll notice on the. Agenda. Oh, wait. One more last thing. This is for Max. I did attend the Colorado Association of Ski Towns meeting, which was in Salida a couple of weeks ago. And it was great. Got to met, meet a lot of communities that are struggling with the same things that we are. A couple of things. Interestingly, Salida is going to be looking to go from a statutory city to a home role city. And was wondering if we wanted to. Sort of partner with them in the, the process of doing that. So that's interesting and exciting. But as you can imagine, short term rentals were the hot topic. So lots of input about different communities and their approaches. I think we just recently had an analysis of whether or not we should change any of our standards. But a lot of communities are just now putting restrictions in place. So the good news is we're a little bit ahead of the game in managing that impact on our community. The last thing is. Oh, I'm sorry. Was there somebody? Okay.
Just go. Very happy. Putting yourselves on the backboard.
It's hard to hear. It is a little bit hard to hear a little bit without from the people who are a little further away from the. Oh, Max, what did you say?
Oh, we were just congratulating ourselves on our forward thinking.
Yes. Yeah. Well, you, you should. Because like I said, a lot of communities are just now getting their hands around it. The last thing you'll notice is that the agenda now this month has consent items. So for the first time, you can see on item number seven, we're trying a consent agenda. This is something that staff has been talking about for quite a while. And our deputy city clerk has sort of pushed the issue a little bit and added this. So for those who you who are not familiar with what the consent agenda is, you can see, we have on agenda item seven. We have a approval of the minute for August sixteen, twenty twenty two. And then B, a resolution number thirty seven, designating the planning official for the city of Leadville as Chapin Le Chance. So the way a consent agenda works is that. We don't read these items into the agenda. There's no staff presentation. There's actually no discussion allowed on any of these items. They are usually put on the agenda as items that we think are. Relatively non controversial. And so they are not discussed items. relatively non-controversial. And so they are not discussed items. What happens is when we get to that item on the agenda, someone would just say, and move to approve the consent agenda. And if someone seconds, all in favor, that's that. If someone would like to discuss an item on the consent agenda, when we get to that agenda item, you request to have the item removed from the consent agenda. And then it will be added to the regular agenda for discussion. If no one moves to remove anything, then the agenda or the items on the agenda are all approved all at one time. So it's a little bit of a way to make things more efficient for us. So that that, and, and there will be, you know, obviously you can see on resolution thirty-seven, there's a staff report, the items are presented to you in the same way in the packet. It's just there's no discussion on the items or debate or anything, individual vote on any of the items. So I wanted to highlight that since that's the next thing we're going to hit on the agenda for tonight. So are there any questions about how the consent agenda works or anything about the consent agenda for tonight?
Yeah, if there happens to be some information missing like there isn't this agenda meeting, meeting minutes, would we then remove it and add in that potentially missing information?
Yes. And so that is why for things like that, if you wanted to do that before the meeting and before the before tonight, what you could do is if you reviewed the minutes, say over the weekend and noticed a correction, you could just send those to Maida and then she could update the minutes online and in the packet and then it could be approved. But if it's, if the corrections are being made verbally at the meeting, then you need to pull it from the consent agenda.
So the council member Luna moves to remove the approval of August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two meetings from the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
For Gen C seconds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. This time we'll go forward with the consent agenda with item seven B on the consent, consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Almost approve the consent agenda.
We're at some point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. All were favored. At this time, we have approval of the August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
There is a slight error in page five of the minutes. Looks like council member Green is missing a vote. I believe that was for council member Hill.
Oh, thanks, council member Luna Layal. That's true.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other changes that you saw? Okay. Thank you. Then I would entertain a motion.
Women, that moves to approve the August sixteenth agenda minutes with the add a cheese.
We're at some point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Great. Thank you. All were favored. Next up, we have certificate of appropriateness and we will go through the public hearing process. This has gone before the historic preservation commission and now it is before us. So good evening. My name is Greg Lobby. I am the mayor of the city of Leadville. This is a public hearing for the city council to consider a certificate of appropriateness for the residential infill in the national landmark district. But I'm going to consider certificate of appropriateness hearing for nine thirty Hemlock Street. So residential infill and it's resubmitted to city council for certificate of appropriateness. When the public hearing is open, I will first attend to some preliminary housekeeping matters. I will then ask for staff to discuss highlights of the staff report followed by the advocate make a brief presentation of his or her case. Then testimony of any individuals in the audience who wish to speak in favor of the application, and then those individuals who wish to speak against the application. The advocate will have the opportunity to rebuttal, which is the advocate's opportunity to respond to any comments made by members of the public. After rebuttal, I will close the public input portion of the public hearing and allow city council and opportunity to ask questions. Once the public input portion of the hearing is closed, we will not accept additional testimony and let it in response to questions posed by the commission with the applicant. At the conclusion of our questioning, the council will render a decision which could include a continuation of the hearing. This public hearing is quasi-judicial, which means we have to follow certain procedural requirements to establish a record. For this reason, it is important that when you speak, you identify yourself. If you would like to submit written material, please understand that the city will have to hold on to those materials for at least thirty days after city council renders its decision. Are there any questions about the public hearing procedure? Okay, thank you. At this time, I ask city council to disclose any ex parte communication. Hearing none? Thank you. Let's move on. This time, the applicant may present to city council on their certificate of appropriateness.
Hi there. My name is Melissa Shelley. I'm with Colorado Container Homes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you just fine.
Okay, great. Yeah, um, we, obviously this is our second time before you for this home build that we're doing. The first time that we applied, there were some changes that were requested by the historical preservation to fit in more with their infill guidelines, which we made all the suggested changes that they had, which is why they approved and why we're here today. But yeah, we're looking to build a single family residence at nine thirty Hemlock with all of the added changes that we made to meet the guidelines of the historical preservation commission.
Okay, Melissa, thank you. At this time, I would ask for the staff report highlights.
I do need to read the letter that I received today and record all copies from the bedroom. It is September third, twenty twenty-two, in a major burn. With reference to the new home plan for nine thirty Hemlock Avenue in Leadville, Colorado, the owners of the town's own John and Lady, do not have plans to use the home for short term rental. The two downstairs car rooms are intended to be used by my two adult children and their families when they visit us. They are intentionally designed the way they are to provide the Michael children and family. Yes, stairs and car room, room is intended for use by the two owners, John and Dean. We hope to clarify any previous misunderstandings regarding the plan of home, especially John, our slave, and me and my people.
Thank you. I would, would say that this letter, it's nice that he wrote this letter because it came up in terms of public comment, people who were questioning whether it was going to be a short term rental. But quite frankly, that, that's not germane to our consideration for this certificate of appropriateness. So. Okay. I would ask then if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak in favor of this application. Anybody on Zoom who would like to speak to city council regarding this application? They're calling Christian.
Sorry.
Okay. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody on Zoom would like to speak to city council about this application? And nobody in chambers? Okay, thank you. In which case I would entertain a motion to close the public input portion of the public hearing.
Well, moves to close the public input portion of the public hearing. For Gen C seconds.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you. All were in favor. At this time, there's no opportunity for rebuttal since there is no public comment. City council is now in deliberation regarding this certificate of appropriateness. Any questions for the applicant or staff from city council? Do you have a question? Please.
And I don't have an answer. So I'm going to look at Chapin and also the applicant. Page forty-six of our packet out of two hundred and seventy-eight. It, it shows two different parking diagrams. One of which says there's a sixteen foot width. And a really interesting way they get into it on the left. And then a dog leg left and where they just sit there on, there's two rendering with snow removal. Is, is this real? It's pretty cool. Do we have anything in our codes that says how many parking spaces are supposed to be within there? Lot to do this because what I see is something that more than likely is not going to work.
Good night, sir. Chapins. Go ahead, Chip.
Sure. Both I have not reviewed these applications. It's the first time I'm, we'll give this level of the review of this. The, I think you can notice that the driveway configuration of the left image and the right image are not exactly the same. So there's if some scarves are there. The driveway configuration of the left, just, I'm just looking first time again, looks somewhat functional. The driveway sign on the right. What's our case on how it function in terms of turning the parking space?
And if I'm, if I'm, the street department and I have already discussed what kind of mess this is, is it almost, I don't want to, I don't want to. I'm challenging because ten streets right there, Hemlock's that, it's almost backing or whatever into an intersection. So the street department and I are looking at, at the C dot, what is recommended in that situation? And we have meetings, we're going to have meetings with the applicant before that part of the, the driveway, but again, the question is very valid. The street department, they've, they've tried to make sure that we do what's right.
I'm, I'm confused. C dot would have no video.
I get to something, C dot, we've got higher of the street regulations into, I don't know. I have to find out exactly what we were, we were discussing this and there's some sort of.
Well, I would say this and Chapin Mayor may not know this, for residential build, there is no parking requirement in the city of Leadville. So that is what it is, you know, but we've not.
I mean, I would just, I, I mean, this for my end stop on my comment, I would prefer more than likely to see one or two parking spaces right in front of it, if they're going to put any, and have more just green space for, for vegetation than, than to have a driveway to a parking lot. And I know that that's probably not part of the certificate of appropriateness.
That's important.
However, if this, to me, thinking about snow removal in the wintertime, if they were to have a space there in the rendering on the left, it's going to be the parking is, the parking area is more than likely going to be filled with snow. So.
I would say your point, this is, this will, when, when they apply for a building permit, this will come, come across the planner's desk.
Okay.
As well. And I take your point. This doesn't seem to be well thought out. But you'll have to deal with that in our site review. When the plans come before us.
Right, that's, yeah, that's, that will be a second check one for this, during the administrative site plan review. If there are any requirements there for, for parking, any conventional standards or anything for non-required parking spaces, I may not be aware now, but we can enforce those in that and of course, course operative suggestions.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant or staff? I, I would like to kind of preface this by saying, when this first was proposed, I, I, I was not in favor of it. I mean, I know just mentally, I just didn't like, like the idea of containers in our national historic district. But they've really listened to the historic preservation commission in terms of doing the six inch overlap siding, in terms of the roof pitch, the, in, 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 in doing where the gabled front in, 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 in favor of a solid front with fish scale and putting a front door in, all those things that, that would make it look more like something that belongs in the historic district. And then, then the conversation around, in HPC was around would, you know, is the container part of it? What's bugging us? And if it is, what if they were just modulars? Would that change our mind? Or would it be the same conversation? And so HPC decided, determined that if they were willing to adhere to the look of the district, that that they would approve it and they did. So I'm just going to give you some, some history in terms of where I came from on this project. Any other questions for staff or applicant? I would like, Melissa, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Um, I think you probably heard our conversation about the, the parking and snow storage. And I know that's not part of the C away, but I just want to make sure you're aware of that concern as you go forward.
Yes, absolutely. We, we fully understand that we need to work with the building department. You know, we'll obviously follow whatever, you know, guidelines they have. Anytime that we talk to the building department, we were automatically sent to start with the HPC before we could really get full spec. So that's where we worried, but everything will be built to their requirements as well. We will change whatever we need to, including the driveway and parking.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other discussion among city council? That I would entertain a motion, please.
Kansas, some member for Gen C moves to approve the resubmitted certificate of appropriateness for residential rebuild and nine thirty Hemlock Street, Leadville, Colorado, eight zero four six one. Based on the criteria set forth in the related COA application materials and staff report dated August ninth, twenty twenty-two, the city of Leadville municipal code section seventeen dot four four, the twenty fifteen Leadville comprehensive plan and Leadville Historic Preservation Commission compatible residential infill design guidelines and standards for the Leadville National Comprehensive Landmark District.
Okay, Bill's quicker than the draw. Thank you. Any other discussion? Shannon, Dana, anything? Okay, great. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council member Loretta. Yes. Council member Hill?
Yes.
Council member Luna Layal?
Yes.
Council member Grant?
Yes.
Council member for Denny?
Yes.
Mayor for Tembry?
Yes.
Yes. I would like to thank the applicant frankly for, for being considered of what HPC asked of them. And I hope it's a very successful project. It is now six forty-four and this public hearing is closed.
Thank you so much.
Next up, we have a temporary use permit for the St. Patrick's Day practice parade. This is just for a change to the practice parade.
Dana.
You next.
Good, good. Hello, I'm Kathleen Fitzminis. I live at four oh eight West Seventy Street in, this is the house where my parents raised my, my dad. Thank you, thank you. September is a huge month for us in Leadville with the practice St. Patrick's Day parade. And it's even more poignant now with the developments that are going on in Evergreen Cemetery with the Irish Michael Memorial. We will be celebrating the completion of phase one of what we've been working on for the last six years out at Evergreen Cemetery. And we're hoping I have some invitations for you on Saturday, the seventeenth, the teni, and we're going to be having the the bailing and the celebration of phase one. And then the, because that's the same journey as both the practice St. Patrick's Day parade and the community dinner, we needed to do some adjustments so that everybody could get adequate time to celebrate each of these important things in high degree. And so what we are looking for is the temporary road delay. Our past two parades have been great because we have had that temporary road delay that. Uh, parades have been great because we have had that temporary road delay that helped keep all pairs and everybody really safe. We have a lot of kids, we have a lot of people dancing and celebrating and to not have any traffic concerns. Made it much more safe and thus celebratory for us, and so we really appreciate that. Uh, the temporary road delay we're looking for is, is changing the time to two, allowing us to have the celebration for the. Um, the Evergreen Cemetery, everybody can get a little bit of lunch, start the parade at two. And then that leads really well into the community dinner and three, trying to get people downtown and then keep them downtown as part of the time change. Um, in addition, the celebration that we'll be having at ten may last a little bit longer. And so we want to again get everybody, not double or triple book them, but give them time between to, to do what they need to do. And then the second part, um, is we are, uh, going to travel north to south. On this parade, a little bit of a shift, yeah, south and north, going that way. Sorry, I'm saying that incorrectly, flipping it, um, interestingly enough, but I've looked back at some of my granddad's pictures of Leadville. All of his parade pictures actually were going that direction. And so what we were thinking of with this, starting down at Third and Harrison, heading this direction toward Ice Palace Park. We can continue the parade up and over and land in Ice Palace Park with the, um, community dinner going on and just sort of keep that moment going there. So those are some of the, the shifts that we're looking at. Um, we are really excited because we're going to have the Irish Council General here again on Saturday. This will be their first kind of visit around the United States, we're in a new section, and our council general, Mihail Smith, will be from San Francisco. Um, he's new to the position and he's going to be coming up the night before, we're going to take him up on the east side, hopefully the outer house and just do a lot of things to really. Uh, convey the, the depth of our, our mining community, but specifically our immigrant ties that we have to all over the world. And how important that is to building us, and so, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be a really fun day on the seventeenth. Um, it may be possible that an old mothering fire truck after the parade again, like we have done. We've had, I think, had three council generals now in that fire truck, and it's really wonderful to have sort of our guest of honor. In that, um, it was a really nice touch to remove the ladder so that they could be seen from both sides. And it really makes them feel special as well as conveys, you know, this, this point of having a dignitary here is really a good time. Um, this is the warmup for next year, which we are hoping will be the celebration part of phase two. And it may be the whole dedication of the entire Irish Memorial down there at Evergreen Cemetery with the permanent name panels. Going in as well as all of the, um, shrubbery and, and a lot of the, the pathwork that isn't part of, uh, phase, phase one. There will be done by next year and it will be probably a Thursday to Sunday event. And we are hoping that with Irish Network Colorado, the Shack Club, we can, um, cooperate and talk to. You know, Main Street and, uh, Community Fund and County Rec and everybody so that we can all be sort of coordinating this, that we're not in competition. You know, with, with one another on anything, but. More than anything, I just would like to express on behalf of the Shallow Love and the Irish Network our gratitude. Um, the incredible amount of cooperation and, uh, just willingness to help from Roman Bridge. Or from the, you know, from, from you all has been transformational in terms of being able to get what was. Um, a pretty daunting project, just lifted off the ground, if you haven't been out to the British Cemetery recently, come on out. If, if nothing else, on Saturday the seventeenth, we're really proud of our work and who it honors. And the idea of naming the unnamed, um, is getting the big culture as we are, you know, going through the great, great recipe. Received from Irish government and it's really helpful, so thank you for your service, the service that you do, you know, the. Representational democracy, which I really appreciate everything that you do. So that, that's the gist of, of those two changes, are there any questions or, or thoughts that I can help answer or?
Anybody have any questions for that? I do have one.
Yeah.
You, you mentioned hydration, so I have to bring it up, and this is an Irish hydration, this Irish event, I just need to know, what might we be hiding?
I just wanted to hand you a little indication that we have for the. For the celebration and it's just a whole day event, it's going to be a lot of fun, even at sunset, we're hoping to go out there and see some. So, thank you, thank you, we live in such a magical place and it's certainly part of it.
Any other questions for Miss Fitzsimmons? Shannon, Dana, anything? Thank you, uh, I would entertain a motion, please.
I do have just a question in the motion. It states right now, and my computers are starting, of course, I believe it says it goes from third to ninth. And I believe you said that you're going to go to, I mean, should we, should it go third to eleven?
Like, what do you all think? What do you think of the ending it right there or going over?
I would say third to ice palace park, because, because, yes, I think that's, that's the best way to do it. Thank you, excellent. Then it would somebody like to make, uh, most of those changes?
So, so updated for use permit for Leadville's Act Club's annual September. St. Patrick's Day Parade. On Saturdays, September seventeenth, twenty twenty two. From two P M until three P M along Harrison Avenue from Third Street, Parkinmont, traveling north to Ice Palace Park.
Do I have a second? No, no, no seconds, thank you, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Mayor from Thackery?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Loretta?
Yes.
Councilmember Louie Nani?
Yes.
Councilmember for Jancy?
Yes.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes, Catherine, thank you so much for all you and Luke have done to, I know it's been a labor of love for a long time. We're getting there. At this time, we have a, uh, an application for new liquor license, uh, for, uh, Zero Day Coffee. Um, this. Again, is a complicated hearing process that we're going to have to go through, I will try and keep it on track. Um, at this time, it is, uh, six fifty three. And I call this, uh, liquor licensing authority to order. My name is Greg Lobby, I'm the chairperson of Leadville, Leadville Liquor Licensing Authority, and that's us. Um, uh, this is a public hearing before the licensing authority considering liquor license application by Zero Day Coffee. Question a beer and wine liquor license for the property at one twenty two East Seventh Street, Leadville, Colorado. I will, uh, first ask, ask the applicant to make a presentation, uh, and enter the application and all supporting documents into the record. Then the licensing authority will confirm that all requirements for approval of the license have been met. Uh, testimony for and against the application will be allowed from persons residing in the designated neighborhood. Uh, applicable for this application, persons who reside outside of the neighborhood may speak if, if the, the licensing authority. At its discretion decides to allow it, and just for the record, uh, the neighborhood is the city limits of Leadville. And we'll get into that further on this. Uh, then based on the testimony and evidence presented at this hearing, the licensing authority will determine whether to approve, approve of, uh, conditions or deny the application. Are there any questions about outside procedures? Okay, thank you, uh, the time is now six fifty five. And I call to order a public hearing of Leadville Liquor Licensing Authority, the authority shall consider the application Zero Day Coffee. Um. So, uh, Mr. Earl and or Mr. Williamson, um, have, have you, uh. Sent in all approved documentations appropriate to this, this application? And you received everything that you need, uh, for this application, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um, do you, can we show that notice was, uh, properly posted and published in this matter?
Yes, um, notice was posted, um, I believe they had it on the front window, um, uh. So that the public and anyone, um, talking by and entering here, they probably can see it.
Okay, um, that's a good suggestion when they, when they do their actual presentation. No, that's good, that's good, this is a very confusing. Uh, now the authority must establish the boundaries of the neighborhood for purposes of this license application. Um, and so, um, then you guys don't even have this. The, the, the sample motion, I'm going to let Tim look at it. Was here, and we actually have to make a motion to establish the neighborhood.
Authority member Hill moves, uh, since resolution number eighteen, thirty twenty one, the higher corporate limits. The city of Leadville be considered as the neighborhood for purposes of this liquor license application and public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Any other discussion? I would say there's a point of discussion, we actually did that in, in a city ordinance, uh, for the liquor licensing authority. Um, so, uh, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Any extensions? Thank you, all in favor. At this time, I would ask the applicant to come up to the podium and make a presentation.
Hello, everyone, uh, firstly, my name is Dan Pinaro, I'm one of the co-owners of Zero Day Coffee. I'd also like to say I'm, uh, required to make this statement, I'd also like to say I apologize on my turn, I just got it down. Been biking all day, I'm on day off. Uh, so what I'd like to say is that Zero Day Coffee, what we've been doing is trying to build coffee, build community, build a great neighborhood. Uh, the other thing we'd like to do is branch into organic natural wines and also provide some beer as well. But mostly our focus is wine, we just want to have a lovely place for the people of Leadville to come in the evenings and also celebrate. Populate as they like, but also, uh, share the wonderful order line. And with that being said, it'll also create more job opportunities within the community. We intend to have, uh, beautiful flexible hours that don't crush on our neighbors or interfere with their livelihoods as well. Want to have a few of the wine bar in our, uh, current vicinity.
Okay, thank you, we may have questions for you.
Okay.
And you'll also have the right to rebuttal of anybody who speaks, um, on, on this matter from the public.
That's not great.
Okay, thank you. Um, the testimony of this here, uh, should relate to the following factors, and so these are the things we'll consider. Uh, the reasonable requirements or needs of the city for this license, appears those have been met. The desires of the adult inhabitants of the city concerning this license, and we'll see if anybody in the public has any comments on this. And also the number type, these are things we take into consideration, number type and availability of liquor outlets located in or near the city. So at this time, I would ask, is anybody from the public who would like to speak on this matter, either, uh, in favor of or in opposition to? Anybody in chambers, you would like to speak, please, please come up and introduce yourself.
And I actually have, um, at one forty six, Eighth Seventh Street, we're on two doors, we're two houses actually from Zero Day. And, um, I've known Tony and Avery, um, since I think before they. And I, I personally know, they're just, they're just genuinely good people, good people, um, they're responsible, very knowledgeable, even trying to people who are. Who will, you get them a warning when it's snowing, they shovel your sidewalk for you, which is nice. Or, um, if I beat them to it and I'm shoving snow, they're trying to people who are coffee to you. Um, also I'm sitting in my car and Avery, we're working with, uh, another not. Um, and, and that's what you want to start out with, you want to start with good people who run the business. Um, and that's what I've seen, I mean, they are a community, doing good things for the community. Um, I often see people sitting in their front yard, having coffee, um, with their dogs, really sweet. And I created a space in front of my lawn so that I can sit out and, and just kind of watch what happens in the neighborhood. And it's nice, they walk, people walk by and say hi, and they sit and hang out with, uh. Humble, and they're the most humble people in the world, I had to tell them to put on this song up, they got those three awards for, uh, best out, best out, and best out. Um, so they really do live up to that, they are neighborly, they help the community. Um, and then I met Hannah, who worked for them, she was meaningful thing, so as far as, you know, providing jobs for the people, I think we'll do that. They've also taken in people, I think people made a place to stay, so they've at any given time had people living in the basement. Um, and then I had people stay at my, my business who have, uh, talked about Avery and, um, and Tony's coffee place. And this is before I had the art community to say, hey, there's a great coffee place in town, like, hey, Laverne, this is great coffee place in town, I'm like, duh, I know. Um, that was one of the great benefits of us moving to Leadville, you know, we've always wanted to post our coffee shops, the very fact that, you know, we have this wonderful place in the morning and then. There are really greedy little, you know, sweet neighborhood place and meeting where you can sit and enjoy, you know, another cup of coffee or. At, you know, sit a glass of wine, um, the nice thing is, as nice we are, and it will also vary, um, responsibly. Um, so I don't think they really have a problem saying something to somebody, if someone didn't become this. Um, and they're always checking in the neighbors to find out, hey, and then they know, hey, um, they're pulling up and they don't have to, they're not like trash. But they're just, they want to enrich the neighborhood and we can sit. Um, so I, I haven't looked out in a while, but they would continue to provide the same type of service through the evening that they are providing in the morning. Um, I'm still happy to hear, and I'm going to look for people to, uh, come over and hopefully, um, be able to sit down and have a beer or glass of wine. So, I'm not fast, I wasn't saying I'm speaking, but. With that being the stuff that I, I could say about that. Bo's, the other, yes, thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak, uh, regarding this liquor license application, anybody on Zoom? If you'd like to speak, please, uh, unmute yourself and just let us know, uh, introduce yourself.
Hi, this is Wendy Wysskill, I don't live directly in the neighborhood, is, is it okay to speak?
Yes, if you don't mind, where do you live, Wendy?
I live on West Sixth Street.
Could you give us your address, please?
Three two two West Sixth.
Thank you very much.
I just want to echo what Laverne said. I believe that Zero Day is a very warm and welcoming community place to sip coffee, talk to, to old friends. Meet new friends and it's a very welcoming place in large part due to Avery and Tony, as Laverne also said. So I just want to echo what she said and hope that things work out. That's it.
Thank you, Wendy. Anybody else on Zoom who would like to speak on this matter?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
I did receive an email, uh, from constituent.
Okay.
In regards to this matter, I feel it's prudent to read the email and record.
Please.
I live at one twenty.
But could you tell us who this is, please?
This is, uh, Mr. Joshua Eads. Who lives at one twenty East Seventh Street. Which is next door to Zero Day Coffee.
Okay.
I will unfortunately be able, be unable to attend the city council meeting on nine six, and liquor license for Zero Day Coffee will be discussed. However, I would like to voice my position to this license. I purchased my home, the business next door was a small quiet antique shop that caused minimal destruction, my enjoyment of my home. After profit, after the property was sold and the new coffee shop moved in, my enjoyment of my property has greatly decreased. Customers of this business are frequently walking directly past my dining room and kitchen windows, forcing me to keep them closed and covered. In order to maintain my privacy. I fear that liquor sales and the likely expanded business hours that will go along with them. Will compound the issue and increase the noise that I must deal with at the time that I am trying to unwind work. And prepare for the next day. will compound the issue and increase the noise that I must deal with at the time that I am trying to unwind work and prepare for the next day. In addition to the privacy issues, parking is already a major concern on our block with the Delaware Hotel Full Circle and the new candy shop. I'm already frequently unable to park within a block of my home, and the addition of a new bar is going to make this situation worse. Also, I am concerned that this license is going to negatively affect my property value. If and when I sell my home, as many people will not want to live next to a bar. I know that if this business was in operation when I bought my home, I would not have purchased this property. Please feel free to contact me if any questions or concerns.
Thank you. Do we have any other letters to be read into the record? Okay, thank you very much. At this time, the applicant has the opportunity to rebuttal. If you if you wish to.
I have no need to necessarily rebuttal that. I had no idea that Josh felt that way. So it seems to me he'd never brought it up to my attention. In fact, in the past, I brought it up to him and we were going to start a wine and beer location. He was excited. He seemed to be nothing but honestly stoked for the fact that there would be another location that they could unwind at. Because prior to that, across the street from them was like a brewing company. So that's just new to my attention. I had no idea he felt that way. But I also would say that our street is pretty busy, but there's lots of work being done. And I have no problem working in front of my house or across the street from it within a few cases. And that's a lot of the day, specifically the evenings, so. I didn't know that, that's how it was.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we have a few things that we need to ask to make sure the process has been followed. And I've seen it in the in the documentation. It says, has the applicant provided to the city evidence of ownership or lease agreement? We have a lease agreement and a statement from the the building owner that they intend to renew the lease. So that's in there. Does the zoning of the property permit the proposed liquor use?
So at this point, a bar use would be would require a conditional use permit. So I just want to clarify from the planning department's perspective that this this applicant has submitted a conditional use permanent application that is currently scheduled for the September committee, when it's meeting. I will come to you with the following.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Tracy?
I have a question. So what you're saying a little bit different of the application because it talks about a retail liquor license establishment and that a retail store is applicable use. So that's what the application. So the application, when it was filled out, we, as we know, there's been a couple of hands that have such this application. This application was initially submitted in December of twenty twenty one. So initially, they, the the person who was processing the application felt that it was an R C, which I think is residential commercial.
It's transitional.
Well, it is transitional commercial. They thought it was a different zoning. So it would believe that it was okay, but then after further investigation, it's actually transitional commercial. And so then we realized, maybe a week ago, that it was, it needed a C U P. So our Christiane Department, our city attorney, has asked us to approve the liquor license if you would like to approve it on a conditional basis for the C U P. And then if the C U P is approved, then they will be allowed to serve alcohol if city council deems it.
So just to clarify, they have to go through this process and then I was, and then C U P process.
Yeah, ideally, it should have been the C U P first and then the liquor license, but because we caught it a little bit late and we had already published it through the public notice on the newspaper and on their storefront, we didn't want them to have to repeat the whole process. So we would like for them to be conditionally approved based on the C U P.
The next question, the city's investigation, the applicant, discuss any reason why the application cannot, the applicant not hold the license here, she is requesting.
There are no.
Thank you. Has the liquor license been denied for the same premises or for a premise within five hundred feet of the applicant's premises within the last two years?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. At this time, kind of our last opportunity for deliberation, if we have any questions for the applicant or staff, let's ask them now, please, Tracy.
Anthony, do you have an idea what time at night you would be closing? You said it was flexible, but I'm wondering. Since you do have a segment to surround you, but in partners that are annoying your neighbors.
At the moment, we don't have any set hours that we discussed. We do want to pick our neighbors and see what works for them. Tentatively, we talked about opening from five P M. until ten P M., which is San Martin at most of our trees also close as well. But again, flexible, we just don't know what to expect on that or what the demand is going to be like. We also open a coffee shop at six A M. So or at least we're up and operating in the stands, but we too also are aware of what time we want to be open at eight night for wine.
I'm just a little concerned. People don't get rowdy on coffee, but they might get rowdy on wine and beer and be able to sit outside and being aware that that could be annoying to your neighbor.
Sure, absolutely.
I wonder if that's a conversation for the conditional use permit. Yeah, and really naming down whatever conditions are part of that conditional use permit for the neighborhoods.
Could you please repeat the the time? I know it's just a guess at this time, but it was difficult to hear.
Sure. Right now, we're thinking about being open for business Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings from five P M. until ten P M.
Did you hear that occasion? Got it. Okay, thank you.
So I would assume that that also goes to the C U P for in consideration to how many other areas serve alcohol in this. I mean, I'm just saying that because we just approved alcohol for the Delaware Hotel as well, from my memory. Obviously, there are plenty of bars downtown. Keeping in mind, though, I don't have, I don't see this as the equivalent. It's still important to keep in mind. We have plenty of establishments that serve alcohol already for these hours even.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that? It's a good point. I've forgotten that the Delaware is just, you know, received their license as well.
This is Dana. My thought is that where Full Circle was, has twice over been a a bar slash brewery. So that neighborhood is no stranger to having multiple alcohol serving outlets.
And the Delaware, you know, one of those Calaway's restaurant had liquor as well. I know you got to get the way back to for that. Yes. Christiane, yes, please.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to note for city council that in the context of the liquor license application specifically, remember that nuisance effects like noise, parking, lighting, trash, things of that nature are actually not considered to be relevant criteria for the license application. As you all just stated, as far as the C U P application is concerned, those considerations can be brought up and addressed at the C U P application point, but for purposes of this liquor license application, those concerns and items should be left out of the whether or not to approve or deny this application. You should go through the kind of checklist that's in the deputy city clerk's findings and go from there.
Then I withdraw my comments.
Any other discussion? I do. I do notice that this motion as proposed, unless I'm misreading it, does not state that that is contingent upon the the conditional use permit. Should that be in the motion, Christiane? Maybe I'm looking at the wall wrong. Okay, then I won't worry about it. Any other discussion? Any other questions for the applicant? I would say as a matter of discussion, well, I'll wait until there's a motion and a second before we give them the discussion. I would entertain a motion, please.
Almost approved a new beer and wine city license application for Zero Day Coffee based on the facts and evidence presented at the public hearing, finding set forth in the deputy city clerk's contract communication form for this application and any findings that the authority made of public hearing following conditions. Condition number one is that the applicant obtained additional use permit from the city prior to stealing beer and wine on the licensed premises. The condition number two, that the liquor license condition, that the liquor license conditionally approved by the city or the applicant not be affected until the effective date of a conditional use permit granted by the city to the applicant that allows alcohol to serve on the licensed premises.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? I would say this, this, at least I get the impression this is going to be more like a just a nice place to hang out, a glass of wine, have a beer. But you know, and also we get to the C U P, we needed the conversation around, okay, what does that mean in terms of friends having a good time? You know, and and maybe being a little louder than the neighbors would love, but that's not part of this conversation. But I I'm imagining a very nice scene, but one that's not necessarily all that quiet. And so that's all, just a follow. Tracy.
I would like to apologize to you guys. It sounds like you've been dealing with this for ten months. And that's staff didn't quite confer for you, and I just want to apologize on the city's behalf and thank staff for figuring out a way to move this.
Chad, the other white staff.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate all our things and words.
Any other discussion? Dana, Shannon? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lorenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yeah.
Councilmember Luna Lea?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Conference for Dancy?
Yes.
Mayor for Pembry?
Yes.
Marylove?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience and good luck.
Thank you for that.
Slowly catching up to Bragman. She has over one hundred and ten minutes. Minimum.
Really? Okay. At this time, Floyd's Fine Cannabis. Do you have a close to public meeting? Pardon me? Did you ever close the public meeting?
No.
Okay. At seven twenty, the public hearing for Zero Day Coffee liquor license application is closed. All right, next up, Floyd's Fine Cannabis, another public hearing.
No, sir.
What?
City attorney, Christiane Department would like me to remind city council that the original application for marijuana is not a public.
Oh, it's not a public hearing? Okay, well, thank you. And that would be what? Reason I don't have a script. So there we go. Okay, there still is a procedure in place. And we will go through this. Do I need to go through the script procedurally or is it not necessary, Christiane?
Do you have a script for a non-public hearing marijuana license renewal, mayor?
I took the word publicly and loved hearing.
Hard to say. It's four pages.
Okay. I I think the main thing here is because this is an application, but it's not a public hearing. There shouldn't be, you know, a public comment period like we would go through in a public hearing. But if you, certainly appropriate to have the applicant give a presentation and have staff answer questions.
Okay, I'm going to go through the first part of this and I'll have the applicant make their their presentation. My name is Greg Lobby. I am the chairperson of Leadville Marijuana Licensing Authority. This is a hearing before the licensing authority to consider a marijuana license renewal application by PBville LLC, D B A Floyd's Fine Cannabis, requesting a recreational marijuana license for the property at eleven oh one Papa Street, Leadville, Colorado. At this time, I would ask the applicant to make the presentation, please.
Hello, everyone. Scott Thompson, Floyd's Fine Cannabis, eleven oh one Papa Street. First of all, the new parking configuration is a huge win, so thank you very much. That has been an absolute game changer for us. As we know, two big concerns in Leadville are silver rainbow and parking. And we, we really did our due diligence and thought that it would be better than our old location. And as it was before you made changes to the parking arrangements, it has been working very well. Of course, it is leadville, so folks tend to park in interesting ways. And having the striped spaces in front of like in front of the establishment really helped to mitigate that. So thank you. The new location has been working out fantastically. We have eight employees for the summer season. At the old location, I don't know where we would have fit eight employees, so this is, this has been been really great. So thank you for your continued support with us operating in this location. We are not planning on making any changes, staying the course, doing what we are constantly doing, being good steward of the license and the responsibility of operating within the laws and regulations of Leadville and the county and the state. So thank you very much. That is for me. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hey, Scott, we'll see if everybody has any questions. First, I want to check with the deputy city clerk. We have all the documentation and applications that we need for this renewal. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does a renewal have to be noticed?
It is not.
Okay, good, thank you.
No complaints.
And there have been none, right?
There have been no.
Okay, good. And so the statement that I need to make is the renewal application submitted to the deputy city clerk together with all supported documents are hereby made part of the record. Any other documents presented to the authority during this hearing shall also be made part of the record if the copy is given to the deputy city clerk. This is not going to be a public hearing? Have to check if that's true. At this time, are there any questions for the applicant? Historically, I would like to say the things that Scott referred to are they moved from, you know, what is now the candy shop to the location. uh, to the location on Papa. And at the time, we, we put, we asked for a couple of things. And one was parking, so a little bit of off-street parking. And then we asked them to put a fence across the west side of the property and both of which things you did, thank you. Um, and those are the luxury requirements that I remember. Okay, just so everybody kind of knows what, what happened. Uh, at this time, any questions, any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, hearing done, then I would entertain a motion.
When the moves to approve the retail marijuana license, store license renewal application for PB Leadville LLC, DBA Floyd's buying cannabis based on the facts and evidence presented at this hearing. Findings set forth in the deputy city clerk's council communications from the this application and any findings of the authority made at the hearing.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember for Dancy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorenzen?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lea?
Yes.
Councilmember for Dancy?
There we go. Yes.
It's still yes.
Council, okay, Mayor for Pembry?
Yes.
And Mayor La.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll see you every year, or maybe it'll be administrative by then.
We hope so.
Yeah.
I have to say, I, I just returned from Duluth, Minnesota, and we popped into a bike shop up there and were surprised to see some products from Floyd's on their, on their counter. Yeah.
Interesting.
Theirs DVD cream works.
Oh, really?
Love it.
We have a testimonial.
That hemp drive CBD, nothing to do with cannabis, but yeah. Thank you.
Good stuff.
Yeah, all right.
Good night.
We'll see you, friends.
Okay, next up, we have ordinance number nine. This is a series of twenty twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending chapter one point two of Leadville Municipal Code, which is, uh, the, the or one point two, hopefully everybody's read this. Christiana, could you walk us through this quickly?
I sure can. So, um, as you all can see, this ordinance um, updates your code. It is the general penalty provisions in chapter one point twenty of your municipal code are a little outdated. And there are two main things, uh, two main outdated things applicable for these changes. So, one is the number, the maximum jail sentence. And two is making sure that the municipal court follows a very specific procedure before jailing somebody for not paying a municipal court fine. Um, so section one, uh, one point twenty point oh one oh, um, that sets out your maximum municipal code violation monetary penalties and also the maximum jail sentences for municipal code violations. That had to be changed from one year to three hundred and sixty-four days. Um, and that is a requirement under state law now, and so we have done that. We have made that change to the maximum jails um, in this ordinance. And like I said, the second major category of changes here is making sure that the municipal court follows a procedure and doesn't have anything in the municipal code that would violate that, you know, following that procedure to jail someone for not paying a municipal court fine. Um, and so section one point twenty point oh three oh and one point twenty point oh four oh um, are both changed to make sure that there are no violations of that state law requirement of following the procedure. So, uh, one twenty oh three oh, um, just specifically references that procedure under state law. Um, and but saying that the court has to follow that procedure before putting anyone in jail for non-payment of a fine. Um, and section one twenty oh four oh, um, currently has the municipal court required to immediately jail someone for trying to pay a court fine with a bounce check. Uh, instead of doing that, we replaced it with, uh, just a fee for a bounce check of twenty dollars, which is consistent with other portions of state law. So, those are the updates and I am happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on these changes, one point two oh? I have a pointed clarification on one point two oh point oh four oh. Uh, it says it removes the requirement. Does the judge still have the ability? It's move, it removes the requirement, but can the judge still issue a bench warrant? Even though it's not required?
So, it, this does not take away the judge's ability to issue bench warrants in general. This just takes away the requirement. And here, uh, we're just taking away jailing somebody for trying to pay with a bounce check and imposing a fee instead. Um, the municipal court judge can still issue bench warrants. Um, here, they would, the judge wouldn't issue a bench warrant for that thing in particular. Um, but she, uh, she could issue a bench warrant for other violations or contempt or anything else in the municipal court.
Okay, let me play the devil's advocate. Uh, the, the judge does not issue a bench warrant. Instead, she taxed on her twenty dollar fine. The applicant didn't pay the first time. They don't pay the second time because they don't care. Then, does the judge have the ability to issue a bench warrant for non-payment of, of these fines?
Whenever the municipal court jails somebody for not paying fines, the court has to provide notice and a hearing and the court has to make specific findings that the defendant basically willfully didn't pay, but still had the ability to pay. And that, um, payment of this fine wouldn't affect, wouldn't cause undue hardship to the defendant or things of that nature. So, my recommendation here is that for this specific circumstance, we just remove that for these bounce checks. Um, and instead, uh, you know, work with collections agencies or whatever else, um, the court has at its disposal to, um, have a civil, basically instead of a criminal remedy for this issue.
Okay, I, I, you know, I have a little bit of a concern with that, uh, because it's, it's as if we made the court's job much, much more difficult. And I'm not saying we should arrest people for not paying the fines unless we absolutely have to, but removing any ability to deal with this properly. It, to me, it makes the judge's job almost impossible.
The judge could still hold a notice and a hearing um, and, and make the required findings, but that would be a whole other court proceeding in addition to the, you know, municipal code violation um, hearings and proceedings or any trials. Um, so that's, that's still an option. Um, but for just a bounce check, um, having the fee in addition to it, I think is appropriate there.
I want to touch on the point that it sounds like it's to kind of protect the person. In that case, um, there's obviously still potential if they're being very obviously malicious, but it's especially to protect, I would say, um, people who don't have the ability and may not have the ability to communicate Spanish speakers, for example, to the judge effectively as to why they don't have the ability, um, to the stated, um, things that Christiana talked about in uh, the normal proceedings of sending someone to jail for not paying the fine.
Yeah, I, I think I do agree with that. I just, at what point? Okay, uh, Christiana, have you per chance had this conversation with the municipal judge?
Yes, um, Judge Floyd did review this ordinance and I spoke to her about this. She has no, uh, issues with these changes. And, um, as it says in the council communication forum, she has been applying the law, uh, state law as, uh, it currently exists and not as the outdated version of the municipal code. So, everything's up to date with the municipal court. This is just updating the code to match what's required in state law.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, uh, for Christiana or comments? In which case I would entertain a motion, please.
When the law moves to adopt ordinance number nine, series of twenty twenty-two, an order, ordinance amending chapter one point two oh of the level municipal code concerning maximum penalties for municipal code violations, imprisonment for non-payment of fines and payment of municipal court fines with insufficient funds checked on first reading. I further move to schedule the second reading of this ordinance for city council's meeting on October fourth, twenty twenty-two.
The gentleman's second.
Is there any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lorenzen?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lea?
Yes.
Councilmember Brigh?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember for Dancy?
Yeah.
Mayor Lobby?
Yes. Thank you very much. Next up, the book. This is ordinance number seven, series of twenty twenty-two. It's an ordinance of repealing and reenacting chapters fifteen point oh four, fifteen point oh eight, fifteen point one two, and fifteen point one six in City of Leadville Municipal Code to adopt by reference the twenty eighteen international building code and list the rest of the codes. This is second reading. So, we will go through a public hearing process. Okay. Uh, this is second reading, so at, um, seven thirty-eight, uh, we will open this public hearing. Because this is second and final reading of the ordinance, the city council will follow these steps. Uh, first off, city staff to give you a presentation. Uh, then, then we'll have, invite the public to provide any comments on the ordinance and finally council will discuss and vote on the ordinance. Uh, first, ask for staff presentation.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so as, uh, the mayor stated, this is second reading of this ordinance adopting the twenty eighteen international building codes. Um, the list of codes is right in the title of the ordinance as well as um, on pages one and, well, page one of your council communication forum for this agenda item. So, on the second reading, uh, we had a few changes from first reading. One of the changes, if you remember, was about the occupancy and limits under the fire code. Um, that has been addressed and, um, the inconsistencies have been taken out. And so that's been updated. Uh, the other change is that we made sure to renotice this to include uh, the international energy conservation code, which is required to be included when the city updates its codes. And, let's see. Um, the other thing to note is that, uh, one question that came up was that it looks like in the ordinance itself, chapter fifteen point oh four only adopts some codes and, uh, the fire code and the energy conservation code is not in that chapter fifteen point oh four. That is true. However, uh, the fire code is adopted in chapter fifteen point oh eight and the energy conservation code is adopted in fifteen point twelve. Um, and that's just because that's how your current code is set up. So, we just use those, that current setup and put the fire code back in fifteen point oh eight, repeal and replace it, put it back there. And same thing with the energy conservation code. The energy conservation code was in chapter fifteen point twelve. We just repealed and replaced that and put it in that location. And so any other changes that you see in the red line were changes made after first reading to ensure that the city's code changes were consistent with Lake County's resolution. Um, there was a, we did a deep dive into the making sure that everything was consistent and we updated the code according to that review after first reading. Um, if you have any questions, this is a giant ordinance. Please feel free to ask.
I, I would like to, uh, to mention, uh, you know, after our conversation today, the, the very end of this is a summary of major changes uh, to all the different codes, uh, just as a point of reference. Uh, really helped me to kind of go through and see what are the differences in twenty eighteen code.
Page two sixty-four of the pack.
I don't know. Uh, this is a summary of major changes. Uh, so, yeah, that was that was informational. Are any questions, uh, for Christiana? Uh, hearing done, then I would ask, uh, for public comment on this particular, uh, change of ordinance. Uh, if you would like to speak to city council, please step up and introduce yourself.
I'm Fred Dawes, we mind five, seven street, Denver, Colorado. Um, my interest in city council address didn't buy a month, a month ago about this ordinance at the first reading. Um, it was inconsistency in IFC. The, the inconsistency had been changed, so it's very clear now. Um, I still have a question and I'm, I see that the fire marshal did yesterday on two meetings and did answer this question. And so I understand all the occupancies have changed to forty-nine for fire alarms is is when we had a conversation with the fire marshal, I don't know, it's much personal in this area, so they wanted to give a early warning for potential fires in the city. The only issue I have is a group A occupancy used to be a thousand, has now changed to forty-nine for a voice communications system. And I still believe even, so in the codes of thousand and it's been changed to forty-nine just for this particular emergency voice communication system. I believe this is a hardship to build a permanent, this is a year of their goal. Um, due to the fact that this type of system costs three times the profit of a normal fire alarm system. I own a fire alarm company and so why, that's why I'm addressing the city council today. We've got the need, this is going to be a hardship in assembly occupancies. The code store that requires a fire alarm system in A occupancy um, for forty-nine people, it's just the way the fire alarm system, this is a voice event system, so they actually have announcers over the speakers and the alarm systems, so it's way more expensive than, uh, a normal fire alarm system. So, I'm just asking the question, why was it changed from a thousand to forty-nine to that particular little piece?
This was the same request you had last month, right?
The first I had last month was a discrepancy. It was a thousand and forty-nine. We didn't know which one it was. Now, the thousand went away completely, that's forty-nine. I'm just asking why it's forty-nine when the normal code, so this type of, um, fire alarm system is required in school, gymnasiums of a thousand or more people, um, sporting events arenas and things like that. And so, obviously, they've made it.
Let's, let's help the fire marshal answer because I thought it was changed here back.
The second, I think I have a second question. So, the second one is a little.
Look, let's help the fire marshal answer your first question, okay? Chief Boyle, can you hear? Okay?
I'm here. I didn't quite catch everything Craig was saying. Uh, can you hear me okay?
Well, I can, I can hear you fine and I think Craig can hear you. I don't know if you can hear him or not. Craig, would you step up to the L? All right, explain what your issue is with, with.
Uh, chief, so I didn't have any problems with the IFC for, you know, the forty-nine um, people for group A occupancies for fire alarms, you know, for group B occupancies and that. But there is one place that says activation of the fire alarm in group A occupancies with an occupancy load of forty-nine shall, shall initiate a signal using an emergency voice alarm communication system. Um, so there was change from a thousand to forty-nine. And that type of fire alarm system is about two to three times the price of a normal fire alarm system. So, what I'm querying is in any A occupancy, so like even a very small restaurant, we would have to put in a voice event.
Letting me answer the question. Chief Boyle, I thought we had changed that to a thousand. Occupancy of a thousand, is that not correct? Because I thought that was the change that was requested.
Well, the change that came about was the uh. Negating of the voice alarm communication system.
Okay, well, clarify for me, is that, is that for over a thousand or what under A occupancy?
Uh, A occupancy for forty-nine or more. And I had a chat with Ann Schneider with the building department. I'm looking at this. I thought this was deleted. Uh, because there was no need for a voice alarm communication system, but a monitored fire alarm system. I thought that was uh, taken out per the conversation I had with Craig. That and the uh, and the uh, discussion I had with Ann Schneider to take that out. I'm looking at it right now and I'm I'm not seeing any need for it. The the intent was to have a monitored fire alarm system, but the paragraph there, activation of the fire alarm in group A occupancy with an occupant load of forty-nine or more, et cetera, that should have been deleted.
Okay, uh, Christiana, was it not deleted?
Um, I I wasn't aware that that section was supposed to be deleted. I just uh, was aware of taking out the inconsistency between forty-nine versus a thousand. So I apologize if that was supposed to be taken out. I just didn't know that. Um, but we can make that amendment on the second reading. Um, and one of the things that we should do is just make sure that this uh, taking that out is consistent with Lake County's um, resolution um, and their regulation. So that's the, that's my only comment on that.
Yeah, Christiana, that could have just been something that just happened between all three different agencies and then it just, it just got lost in the mix. I I could probably take responsibility for that for sure, because I thought it was taken care of, but uh, that could have just been a simple miscommunication between the departments on uh, trying to fix the verbiage.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both. Uh, Craig, you have a second issue that you wanted to, and you better stay up here close to the owl.
So the second issue I have is not for the fire official, it's actually for the building official, which I don't think is here today. But it's in the IRC, which is the International Residential Code, and what it says, it's about openings and stair railings and things like that, you know, like um, the actual railings. Now, the code says four inches. The city of Leadville is changing to six inches, which is less restrictive. Now, I'm asking the question, why? Because the code officials that brought the codes have a reason why it's four inches, because baby's heads and things can't go through this. I'm just asking why the city wants to adopt a less restrictive code over the IRC.
I didn't know that we were allowed to adopt.
I I don't think you are. I'm I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not going to make that thing that when I did my, you know, when I.
Chris, Christiana, do you have an opinion on this? You're muted.
Which section? Can you guys point me to which section this is? Uh, which section of the IRC are we talking about?
It's R three one two, one point three, opening limitations.
Let me find that really quick, okay?
Does it open protection?
No.
Well, opening limitation, so it's one second.
Christiana, I have it all shared for you if you'd like to look at the screen.
Thank you. That is very helpful, Maida. I am trying to find in the Lake County Resolution what it says in the Lake County Resolution, because as far as the substance of this ordinance goes, um, we were matching up with Lake County's um uh, standards and measurements and changes and all that, so let me find that really quick, okay?
So in the case that it is six on theirs, does it make more sense to go by the regulation set or recommendation set or by the county?
Well, if 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 the if the county says six and we say six, we're both wrong, right? It it's going to happen for, it's going to be, have to be the the IRC.
So there's a reason why they have these restrictions. They obviously learned years ago it used to be six and they changed it to four. Um, and so when I did mine, you know, we did the training on RCC and that, and we said the authority of the restriction could make it more restrictive, but they can never make it less restrictive because it opens up. I'm not a lawyer, that's why you have your.
I've always understood the exact same thing in terms of adopting this.
Yeah, okay, so Leadville, or sorry, Lake County's resolution does have that six inches in it. Um, in this uh, IRC section, R three twelve point one point three. Um, it also says six inches in Lake County's resolution, and that's why it's in this code. Um. I can, I can double check the IRC, that section of the IRC really quick to um, confirm that it says four inches there. And if that's the case, um, then we can change it to four inches in the city's code at the second.
That was R three twelve, what dot what?
Three twelve point one point three.
Thank you. Um, do you need a minute to do that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, uh, in that case, we're going to take a five-minute break. Or six minutes, whatever you need. So we'll have two. Potentially two changes in this motion. What, do you have the, what that first?
I have to see, but I'm.
Well, she she quoted in prior, so what what's the?
Single video thing. Uh, the IFC I found was specia nine oh seven point two point one point one, but that's IFC, not the IRC.
That's okay. So IRC would be R three twelve dot one dash three. Okay. Those two would have to. Change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, well, the three changes.
It has to be.
I didn't know that, but.
I guess maybe. Where's that stairwell go? That's.
Uh, it goes to a block door down in the basement. Uh, we can, we can unblock that door. In fact, I think you can undo it from the inside.
Just down to your wire room. And there's another knee breath saddle there. Never noticed that.
Right, right, kind of turning the utility closet.
And I'll be able to.
You want to tour?
No, but.
I'm your guy. Actually, when I, when I first became mayor, you did one together. Three or four months in, we just put a part together and just started cleaning that place out. I knew it. We we were filling. And there's still a bunch of progress to go.
But that's the model because of the production.
But it's way.
You know what you say, this thing is way, way better than all the money we spent. Why didn't we do the hour at the beginning? What happened?
Means absurdity. It it. If we had, if we had just taken Build a Generation's advice from the very beginning, we'd have.
Yeah, we could have, we could have gotten uh.
You guys, you guys.
Well. It is after a day-long training.
They'll be all fun.
What's the event? Uh, the fish hatchery, like, I guess, right, it's a duty event for volunteers for the Build Generation. That's great. Yeah, it's it's, it's going to be a much better change of pace than just training. There's a waiter. Absolutely. How are you doing? Where are you going? You raise your hand. Are you good?
Yeah, I have the answer whenever you guys are ready.
I'll let the mayor know.
Thank you.
Great, you were ready to laugh. I know, I played it, but it's too many notes. I can't even think. I'm in here.
Right.
Before Steve. Don't be shy.
So I think we're going to have to move a little bit closer, because I could find an additional speaker depending on the feet jumping up.
Christiana has our answer.
Excellent. We'll uh, we'll reconvene here in a minute or two. Let's see, who's Ted? Well, let's see, you have Shin and Dana. Well, in that which case, um, we can reconvene city council at seven fifty-seven. Christiana, what do you have?
Okay, so under section R three twelve point one point three in the internet, two thousand and eighteen version of the International Residential Code. Um, this is what is in Leadville's ordinance that is shown up on the screen under that exception, number one. That is okay. Um, it says six inches in the exception in the IRC and it says six inches in the city's ordinance. The change is the six inches or more. Um, the or more language is what's different in the code. Um, the actual, um, and again, this is an exception. The kind of general language for this section says that required guards shall not have openings from the walking surface to the required guard height that allow passage of a sphere six, or sorry, four inches in diameter. And then, so there is the four inches requirement. We're not changing that, but in this exception, what we're changing is it says six inches or more. So it's just the exception that is being changed, not the general requirement.
I'm confused. How can you have an exception? You know, if the requirement is four inches. I've been, I know I've been uh, a little thick here, but.
Um, I I I don't necessarily have that answer, mayor, because I am not a a building official or um, engineer or anything like that. Um, all I can tell you is what it says in the IRC and what it says here, and um, as it is stated in the code. Um, the exception in the IRC is six inches and as it stated in our ordinance, it is okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, please, but.
So the way I'm reading this exception, uh, and sorry about this, it said, uh, exterior stairway, raid floor area balcony and porch shall have immediate rails or ornamental closure which do not allow the passage of chairs six inches or more in diameter. So to me, that is an exterior exception. Is there, is there a reading in there that speaks to the rails interior on stairways? And is that the four inches, the standard four inches? Right? You have a baby in the house. Head will definitely get through a six-inch opening, so I'm thinking that the interiors are probably a four inch. And they're saying there's an exception if you want to go to six inches on the exterior. Is that how I'm reading them?
I'm not sure, council member for Gen Z, that might be a better question for um, either the the probably the the building official, because that's the person who um, knows these regulations. Um, I don't see any mention of exterior in the actual language of this section of the code. Um, I would have to look at, uh, you know, a broader range of language here to be able to have that context of whether we're talking about exterior versus interior or whatnot. So I just, I just don't have that answer for you right now. That would be a question for the building official.
How do you want to proceed, Max? I mean, we can continue this until we get an answer. And uh, did did Craig leave? I'm sorry.
Yeah, he, he. That he said everything he needed, didn't he?
No questions.
I think we should continue. I think it's such a chance to correct the fire code.
Well, that's true. We correct the fire code and answer the question of the the difference in the four inches and six-inch exception and what that means. I I I would like that explanation as well, make you feel better about passing this code. I mean, I have no doubt that there's probably a good explanation. I just don't know what it is.
None of that sort of expert here.
Christiana, is there any, any s- serious downside to continuing this?
No, I I I don't think so. I I think that if city council would like to have more information, it is perfectly acceptable to continue the public hearing and second reading too, but I I would do it to a a specific future date so that we know when to uh, get to your answer.
Let me jump in just one second. Uh, this is Lori. There is a reason to consider adopting it sooner rather than later. The county has adopted theirs and they are implementing two different building codes right now, and it has been a burden on them. So we have, uh, this is more time sensitive than uh, other items that we've continued. We had uh, the issue of the energy code and needing to add that back in, and I think if there's a way that we can address this question tonight and potentially get it packed, because it sounds like there's just one, one small issue with all of the code. If there, Christiana, is there any way that we can um, craft a resolution to pass it without with and answer that question at a later date?
Uh, that that would, that would be tough, because if there are any changes that need to be made based on the response to that question, um, then that would be challenging. Um.
You know, the other option is, so this is a question, uh, i- it. I I mean, maybe there's a way that I can get ahold of um, Ann right now. And uh, we can get the question answered, because it seems like it's a very small, simple question. Is that right? There's only one question left, correct?
That is correct. Only one question we know of is the discrepancy between four inches and the six-inch exception uh, to the four inches. We don't understand what that exception applies to, and we don't understand to what the four inches apply.
Okay. We could move on to the next item and just move this down.
I'll be glad to do that. At this time, uh, we're going to, uh, it is uh, eight oh four. Uh, we are, we're not going to close this hearing, but we're going to, we're going to uh, just hold the hearing until, until and if we can receive an answer on our question, in the meantime, we'll move on uh, to the next agenda item. Okay. Okay. Um. So the next item up is um, this is resolution number thirty-nine, series in two thousand and twenty-two, a resolution opting out of the paid family and medical leave insurance. Uh, we have discussed this. Uh, staff has given us their opinion on um, why this makes sense and and we've also, we've heard not only from from Christiana and Lori and Donna um, on this, uh, but also the nuance that should we choose to, uh, we could by not participating, cover uh, the cost uh, to to an employee who who wants to opt in, even if we opt out. Oh, that's not really part of this resolution.
Mayor, first, um, great time for him though.
Yes, Dana.
Hi, I apologize. I remember us initially discussing the Family Act and I don't know if I was absent or I don't know, but could we review why is written as opting out, why, how this, how this recommendation was arrived at? Because the last I remember, we simply reviewed it and wanted to see some financial data about the impact of opting in versus out. Thank you.
I think we, we did see that data, but I'll let Christiana speak to that.
Yeah, so, excuse me. The main reason that the resolution would be to opt out of the family program is because the only circumstance when City Council would have to adopt a resolution is if City Council were to opt out. So that's one of the main reasons. The other reason is that following the initial work session and the follow-up City Council meeting on this and after looking at the city's different options, one of the ways that the city could potentially use its money in the most effective way to help its employees have access to this program, but also provide the most financial assistance for employees to have access to this program is by opting out and using the money that the city would have put toward the city's portion of a premium to cover, cover a portion or all of the employees portion of their premiums if the employee decides to opt in. So if the city opts in, then all employees have to participate in the program. If the city opts out, individual employees can make that call for themselves whether to opt in to the program or not. And if the city opts out, the city could also decide to help pay for the premiums for those employees who want to participate. So it would be kind of a, the idea is that it would be a better use essentially of the city's money and help employees get this leave without it costing more for the employee.
If I'm reading this correctly, though, if the city opted in and covered a hundred percent of employee costs as well as the city costs, it would cost the city just over ten thousand dollars. Am I reading that correctly?
Let me get back to that page. That, I believe, is the minimum amount. Maida, do you mind scrolling down to the financial considerations section?
It's section two.
Yeah, fiscal impacts, thank you. Okay, so if you opt into, yeah, so as, as it says here, if you opt into the family program, that, that ten thousand dollars, that's just an estimate. That would be if you opt in and decide to, let's see, pay a hundred percent of the employees' premiums. That's kind of the minimum, this is just an estimate, so you'd be looking at a minimum of ten thousand or so dollars every year. And, yeah, so was that your question? I'm sorry, Dana, I was looking at the.
Yes, that, that, that was my question, that if we opted in and covered all of the employees' costs, it would be about ten thousand dollars. The only time that that would change, if that's the minimum, is if our number of employees changed. Is that also correct?
That's right.
Or if their, or if their pay went up, or.
I actually think you, Councilmember Green, it's, it's if we opt out, you said opt in.
No, I, I, what I'm saying is that if the city opts in and covers a hundred percent of our employees' costs, the way that I, that it would cost ten thousand dollars. And the only time that that would change, the reason why that's a minimum, is that if we added more city employees.
I just clarified for one minute. Please. It doesn't say and pay the employees' premiums, it says or. So we opt into the family program or if it decides to opt out, but pay a hundred percent of employees' premiums. And this is your cost.
So what is the cost if we opt in?
It's the same cost for us, but then it would cost the employees the, this, this same amount.
Yeah, it doubles our cost.
Well, certainly, the, the employees.
And if we opt out, agree to pay a hundred percent, it could actually be less than that if not a hundred percent of employees.
That, that is correct, that's correct.
Okay. Actually, less than.
Yeah.
But if we opt in and pay a hundred percent, why would that double our costs? Does that?
Because we, we pay a hundred percent of our premium, which is, and then they would have to be a hundred percent of their premium, which would double, which would double that level.
So from what I remember, the way the program worked was if we choose to be part of the program, we have to pay a certain amount to basically participate in it and have all our employees be participants regardless of choice. That doesn't exclude any fee that would go to them regardless. They're gonna get those fees whether we opt in or out. The ability to opt out, I guess, gives us the choice of saying, alright, well, the funds that we would have used of opting into this program, we could actually use to cover their fees that they would have been charged anyways. That's my understanding of the whole situation.
Mine as well, yes.
And it's one percent, one percent of wage.
Point zero four four five percent.
I thought it was more than that.
Forty-five.
Not on the table is opting in and covering the employees' cost to participate. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the, so the reason we're not doing that is that costs the city more money. If we opt out, the employer's share is covered by the program. And therefore, our, our money goes further, the city's money goes further if we opt out and the employer's share is covered by the program. And we use the money that we would have used for participation in the program towards paying the employee's share. So if we opt out, it is less cost to us as the city and more cost effective for us than opting in and paying the our portion and the employees' portion, if that makes sense.
I guess my concern here is less, I mean, because we're talking about ten, twenty thousand dollars. My concern is that in our efforts to build a workplace that is supportive and embraces a better working environment that simply having this as an option versus this is a program that we embrace and we support is, I, I, I guess it runs contrary to, to, in my mind, to what we have been doing in terms of awarding bonuses and increasing salaries. And this program overall is gonna, it really in, requires a maximum participation, even though we have the option of opting out. The way that this program is gonna work best is if, is if people all participate. So I'm just a little concerned that we're, that we're in opting out, arguing or moving against what our prior trend has been and also not supporting an important program that the state of Colorado voted to implement.
But I, I think the issue really is, is that I, I, it comes down to education because I think letting our employees know that the program is available and that they can participate is going to be our responsibility regardless. I just think it's more fiscally responsible for us to use our money to opt out and then pay the employee's share. It costs us less money and then we let the employee know it's free to them. I don't think the employee, if we let the employee know it's free to them, regardless of how it gets to be free, I don't really think that that matters to them as long as we educate them that it's available.
Well, I, I brought this up last week as well, the idea of not putting our money where our mouth is, so to say, for the state program. I, I kind of have the same idea that Dana has. It feels foolish to use that, I mean loophole for lack of better words, because it's basically what it is to our advantage and save money in that sense, because it might be saving this money short term, but in the long term, if this program is no longer viable because too many parties are opting out and using this loophole and it's dissolved, it would be a huge loss to our employees. So I, I think.
Just to be clear, there, the only, only municipalities can opt out. So the program, this entire family program is not a rise or fall on the city of Leadville opting out. It, it, it is a, a state-funded program and private companies, private employers do not have the ability to opt out. So don't worry that the program will fail if we opt out.
I say no opt feels responsible, Bud.
Hey, I'd like to hear from the Northern City Council on this. This is a fairly contentious matter. Tracy, I'd like to hear from you. Oh, I'm sorry, Donna, please, go ahead.
Can you hear me? I don't know, this is new, new here, so.
Oh, we can hear you clearly.
Okay, I just wanted to bring up one small point. When I did those calculations, it was before the mid, mid-year raise. And also, we will get obviously another raise at the beginning of the year, so that might be a little off on that number.
Okay, what, as long as you're on the line, what is the administrative burden on, on either end of this? Does it change in your mind whether we opt in and everybody is part of it? Or we opt out and people then have to individually opt in to the program?
Quite honestly, I don't understand that part of it, so I'm gonna not say anything there.
Mayor, I can answer that question, I can answer that question partially. The municipal league has done some analysis and, and they, participation, so us opting in, it's the CML that says the cost of the family program may outweigh the benefits to the municipality. So family program participation will increase municipal budgets by at least point oh five, uh, four or five percent of its employees' wages annually and potentially more. Let's see. Family also includes additional administrative work for finance and human resources staff. Now, again, it, it will do that if we pay the employee's share, but potentially not as much as if we are participating in the formal program itself. So if we pay the employee's share, we can just calculate that, that share. So I, I don't know the exact amount of work that it would cause, but CML indicates that it will cause additional administrative work for finance and human resources staff.
It's, to me, it's additional work either way. You know, I, I don't, you know, it's hard to know. If you simply build in all employees to this program, then that, that's pretty simple, straightforward. You know, proposition, if you have employees that are opting in and maybe opting in and opting out and opting in, over time, it seems to me that administrative burden could actually be more impactful. I don't know, I'm just speculating.
And additionally, though I know that we probably do a good job of communicating to our employees that this is an option, I think in cases of emergency, it's better to know that you already got, you don't have to opt in. And there's plenty of cases where one doesn't think about this and they're like, oh, no, it's, I'm good. I'd rather not opt in. And I, I guess I'd like to see that just be always available to all our employees.
Thank you. Shannon, I'd like to hear from you. Well, you're muted, so I guess I won't.
In the throes of reading, can you come back to me?
I can do that.
Just for Claire, I'm, I'm reading for clarification, I'm in my own brain, so give me just another minute.
I am going to return.
You're going to what?
My brain.
Thank you. Tim?
I think it is in comeback on council along to prioritize fiscal prudence. And the fiscally prudent thing to do is to opt out. It's gonna save us over ten thousand dollars a year. That doesn't take away the program from anybody, they're still welcome to opt into the program and you can cover a hundred percent of their, it's nothing possible, anything. As far as the program's staying solvent, that's not our responsibility. So that's where I stand with it, with opt out.
Thank you. I do have a question. You said only municipalities could opt out, is that what I heard, Lori?
Yes.
How about, can, can counties opt out?
I do not think that counties can opt out. Oh, wait, I took, I took that back. No, I, I took that back because I think the county's having the same discussion. I, actually, I take that back. I think the county is having the same discussion about whether or not to opt in or out and is in the council communication form, it's local governments that can opt out.
Local government, thank you.
Right.
So my gut says that we ought to out because as, as Mr. Hill said, we're not preventing anyone from benefiting from it, I think. But we could be under a financial burden if, if it wasn't needed.
Okay, thank you. Tracy, you have another comment.
I have another option. Suppose we opt out but we require everybody, all employees, to opt in to ease the administrative burden. Is that legally okay?
I, I'm not sure that it would work that way, Councilmember. Under the state law, it's, if the local government employer opts out, then it is the individual employee's option to choose whether they want to opt in or not. And so I think taking that away, if the city opts out, would probably be contrary to what it says in state law.
And just one point of clarification, I just confirmed that the county did opt out of the program as well.
Do you know on what basis they opted out?
I can text Tim Burglin right now and find out.
Just curious, it's probably not important, I'm just curious. Okay, well, we, this is a very interesting conversation, I have very mixed feelings about it. We could put this to a vote. What's, what's the sense of City Council? Do we want to entertain a motion and vote on that motion? Or do we want to? Well, we, we've given a thought. We have the numbers. I think we owe it to ourselves to make a decision. That makes sense to everybody?
And I just got a text from Judge Floyd. It sounds like she was trying to raise her hand on this issue and was not able to.
Judge Floyd, please.
Yeah, it actually, I'm wearing my hat as the county attorney for this, the comment to, to help in terms of your question about the county opting out. The reason that was given at the BOCC meeting today was because the, the commissioners decided that they wanted to use the resources that it would cost to opt in, to participate, if you will, to enhance programs they already have, to look at better ways, things that would benefit the employees better, they felt in, in our situation than what the general program would offer.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. At this time, I'm going to entertain a motion and while I'm second, then, then we will have final discussion and we'll vote.
Have we discussed percentages? Are we all on board of a hundred percent of?
What do you mean?
Well, in, in the motion, totally. There's a, a placeholder for the percentage if we opt out, that we pay for the employees to participate.
Assume that it's a hundred and we're all pretty much on board on that.
That, that's what I would approve, but. Then I would entertain a motion, please.
So most of Doc Resolution Number Twenty-nine, Series Twenty-two. Resolution opting out, we paid family medical leave insurance, family program. And further move that the resolution be amended to show that the city will pay one hundred percent of the employees premiums. For those employers who participate in the family program.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay. Time for discussion. I'd I'd like to go first. I have, again, very much feelings about this. Uh but I am, I am moved by the idea that that. Our our primary responsibility is to our employees and that we're not talking about a lot of money. And that it may actually be less of an administrative burden. To have everybody automatically in as opposed to opting in. So I'm 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 saying I I I'm inclined to vote no on the proposed motion, but that's just me. Any other discussion? Yes, Shannon, please, go ahead.
I think I I need a little clarification, understanding said differently for me. What you mean by paying a hundred percent of any employee who opts in, could somebody explain that to me?
I'll I'll explain it to you. The cost to both the city and the employee is point four or five percent. Of their payroll. Okay, and I I don't know if it's a base payroll, base payer, anyway, it doesn't matter. Point four or five percent, little less than half a percent. The city would have to pay that and the employee would have to pay it. If we opt out, the city doesn't have to pay it. But we can, and and then if the employee opts in, we can pay that point four or five percent.
For clarification, we can pay regardless if we opt in or out, right?
I'm not sure, actually. It's a good question.
You could choose to pay one hundred percent of the employees premiums if you opt in, yes.
Okay, yeah. We're not talking about huge sums of money here, uh though I guess two hundred thousand does start, you know, getting a little bit up there. Twenty, sorry, yes, not two hundred. Twenty thousand, it's it's starting to get up there, plus whatever increases there are uh to wages or to new hires. I I just, I agree with uh Mayor Labey. I don't see why we wouldn't opt in and pay our fee as well, honestly, the employee's fee. I think it eases everything. I think it makes sense and there is no possible way this could go wrong for anyone. Uh for any noise. So I'm inclined to vote no as well.
Let's continue discussion. Max.
Uh if if we were gonna opt in, I would not want to pay a hundred percent of their 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 side of it. I mean, the whole thing is, is that we can't give. All employees everything I need. I love all of you, just that that's nothing against it, however, we do have to think about. Other ways of retention such as. Giving them a thousand dollars towards wellness and or whatever it is. Given that there's other ways of retention, this is one way of saying we have more benefit. We just can't say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna buy into this and we're gonna pay your your side of it. I mean, I just think that. I don't give free health insurance to being a federal employee, right? I pay my federal, I pay every year, every year, just like you do. Right? Your your health insurance is something that you're gonna buy into. You have to, you have to pay a part, right? And we can't just go in. That's that's me personally speaking.
Okay, thank you.
That's why I like the opt out, to be honest, because then we're kind of doing it, because we do wanna opt in as an employee.
That is it. Thank you.
I just don't see as opting in because of an administrative burden. Being fiscally responsible. I don't see how it's going to be administratively. At a cost of over ten thousand dollars. To manage the people that opt into the program. That just does not seem reasonable to me at all. I would prefer to opt out.
Thank you. Tracy.
Honestly. We're not hurting for money and if we can do something for our employees that is available. I think we should do it. I would probably vote to opt in.
Thank you. Dana?
Well, I've, you you guys have heard what I've had to say thus far, but I would like to just add. That um that my opinions are driven both by. A desire to have a consistent systemic policy of uh employee support. But also informed in my in my professional life, seeing people regularly on uh on the backside. Who are hit with unexpected medical or family medical issues that. Cause them a great deal of monetary and uh emotional stress as they try to balance. Having to show up for work and having to either pay for uh uh unexpected medical costs. Or or give aid to an uh it it an affected family member. Um and and how much distress this wrestling that they can't get out of work. In order to give the care to people or take care of themselves as they need to. I see this routinely. And this is, as Christian pointed out, often unexpected. Nobody plans on this. Nobody thinks like, oh, you know, it's a good idea to to set aside money and plan for this, like we all wish we could. This program I view as a mechanism of of public good and ma- matters of public good. Are best served when everybody pays a little. And I think we should opt in and I would vote no, the resolution currently stated.
I'd like Shannon to speak first. Thank you. Shannon? She's still muted.
No, I'm here. I I already spoke. I asked my question.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Please, Chris.
I would just like to remind everybody that we received an email from Donna. And he got a hundred and eighty thousand dollar windfall in our severance check, that we were not expecting. Another, not expecting our money from him.
Great.
I would just like to remind everyone, too, that if we opt in, there will be another discussion. Of the percentage of employees premiums that we pay.
That'll be a second motion. Thank you. That is true. Correct.
If we opt in, that doesn't automatically mean that we're paying a hundred percent of the premium.
No, right. I agree.
Also, that just because we have windfalls doesn't mean we can be wasteful. We need to be prudent with our finances.
Uh this time we have motion on the table and a second motion is to opt out. With a hundred percent uh of the employee premium being paid because we opted out. Um that's the short version. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunalea?
No.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember for Jethi?
Yes.
Mayor Protenry?
No.
Mayor Lobby?
No. Uh that vote was four to three and uh the motion failed.
It's like the tightest vote we've ever had.
You know what? I I've said for a long time, it's good to disagree. That's uh that's healthy. But now we need a second motion, but before we go to a second motion, Christiana, uh. We're. Oh, did you say we do not need a motion to opt in?
You don't need a resolution to opt in in this case, because it's so tight and because you want to. Decide the percentage of employee premiums that you would pay. In addition to opting in and paying the city's portion of the premiums, I would, I would do a motion, a formal motion, at least. You don't need a resolution, though. And I would have the motion um opt in to the family program and state the percentage of the employees premiums that the city will cover.
I don't want, can we not have that discussion?
Why wouldn't we? We have all the information in front of us.
Well, because it's not on the agenda.
But it is on the agenda, you know.
Having a resolution to opt out was on the agenda. Talking about what we're gonna do when we opt in is not on the agenda.
Personally, we'd just like to get this done with and not have to keep revisiting this.
I'd like to hear why you would not like to do that tonight.
I'd like to give a spot. I don't wanna be forced to come up with a percentage of what we're gonna pay right now. But we just offered out.
Okay. All right, how does everybody else feel?
I personally am okay with making that decision, but I would understand if other members aren't.
Agreed.
Shannon, Percy?
I'm okay with that.
Shannon?
I wanna hear some numbers. I mean, I I get, uh for example, uh life insurance. I don't get my, I I paid my life insurance, and so what's gonna be the percentage? I wanna hear some percentage numbers on the campaign.
So we, can we ask our finance to our to give us like a fifty percent, seventy five percent, a hundred percent cost to?
Well, that would just be a percentage of the ten thousand, three hundred and whatever it is. We, again, we have the numbers, but you, I'll say this, to Max's point. If we're opting in, I think the employee and the employer should have equal costs. That's that's my opinion. Uh it's 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 point four or five percent for the employee, point four or five percent for the employer. That's that's an opinion.
I agree, Mayor, in terms of that, that um it it's supporting our employees in a different way. I understood that we were thinking that we could use the money to offset other costs and benefits, but this is one that we have voted to do. So I agree with supporting it fifty fifty.
Well, that's the way, that's the way legislation is written. Uh we can, we can, we could change it uh in a motion if we decide to. So the.
So you're going to have them pay their full premium and we'll pay our full premium. And you don't cover any percentage. That's what you're saying, which costs more to the employee, yeah. It's gonna cost more to the employee by opting in.
If we so choose to let that happen.
Okay, do do we wanna continue to have this conversation tonight or do we wanna give it some thought? And put it on the next agenda?
I I mean, quite frankly, I just don't see what opposing thoughts there could be other than maybe like. We have the numbers in front of us. The only thought that we're giving it in to is, does it make sense for the city to? Also pay the employees fees. Quite honestly, it sounds like we all have our own opinions already made of this and we don't necessarily need to get into more times and thoughts for this. As it seems that, you know, we've already had our thoughts made, but maybe I'm wrong and other council members feel like. We still need some time to think about uh whether it makes sense for the city to cover any costs um of the. Employees uh balance for this.
Okay, uh then I would uh. Real quick, I don't wanna belabor it anymore than we have to. Shannon, do you have an opinion on this?
No.
Okay. Dana?
Opinion on what percentage the city should cost employees or if we should put this, kick this down the road a little bit?
Well, yeah, the, I think at this point, we're having the conversation about about percentage. Whether or not the city should, in addition to paying the city share, should pay any portion of the employee's share, I guess is where we're going with this.
Yes, my opinion is that if we, uh again, as a consistent approach to. Supporting employees and supporting their uh their lives and their ability to uh to work. And address their family needs, I would say that the city should still cover the employees' costs as well. I I do, there's enough of a conservative in me to balk about im- implementing a program. And then requiring people to pay into it. But but I do think we should cover all of the employees' costs for this program.
I agree, Anna.
Okay. I'm not quite sure where we're going with this. I would entertain a motion. Uh and there there are two two sides to this. Uh I'm not sure it's clear to me which way it's going. But I would entertain a motion uh to opt in. And me personally to pay zero percent of the employees premiums, but that would require a motion for some of the.
Councilmember Chancy moves, I don't even know, I'm not even moving back, because I think we have staunch one side and staunch the other side. I am absolutely, you know, I I am very, very, before we're going farther. I am a firm believer in supporting our employees. I am not a firm believer in handing things out to employees. All right, there's two different things to do that. They, you you, it is an honor to have a job. All right, and it's civil service that requires you to actually show up to work and do your job regardless of. Whatever benefit you get. I am a civil servant. For the federal government, I'm here. I am not here because I get a benefit of this. You have to not just continue and hand it out. I'm sorry, we continue to give people raises, that's great. We continue to give them things, go and go. Well, when when are we gonna stop and start thinking about really? Thinking about what rights sizes look like instead of just having this free for all the entire time. I don't get midterm raises as a federal employee. I don't get bonuses, like it's been set up already here in Leadville. Uh City of Leadville, both of which I support, all right? I'm saying the federal government is a little bit more restrictive than this. It's coming to me, but it's against my being. To continue to say, oh, we needed a mid-year adjustment. Oh, let's have a, let's have another uh a retain retention. People are gonna leave no matter what you do for other reasons, right? They're here because they wanna work for the city of Leadville, because they like the way where they work, right? You can have the best benefits in the world and if the workplace environment's a piece of crap, nobody's gonna stay, right? And so you have to have the best workplace environment. And the benefits there, right? And so I'm just saying. I am, I am against, I don't care about the ten thousand dollars, we have ten million plus dollars worth of payings to do on our streets. Right? That is something that I'm more informed. We don't even have a way to clear a sidewalk without using the blade of a plow. Going down poplar, all right? We're gonna go in and do this. I'm just saying, we can continue to give, and I love every single employee, but when's it not gonna work? Right? That's mine. That's where it's at. If you wanna give, let's just give everybody a point percent raise right now.
Let's, let's see if we can put together a motion. Would you like to make a motion?
No.
Okay. Hit need a motion. Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, but you won't like my.
I won't like your motion, but that's not, that's tough. Well, we'll, we'll stop right now, okay? I think that we've reached, I'll I'll just refer to as an impasse. In terms of philosophically and and how we're approaching this, another motion that is either passes or defeated. Wouldn't make a lot of sense to me right now tonight. I I'm I'm going to to ask what we table. Uh this um issue.
Can I ask a question to Christiana? Can we? Can we, for example, opt in a hundred percentish year and then change our minds after?
Excuse me, right as I was about to talk, I swallowed my own spit, so sorry about that. So I think that you can revisit this. Let me, let me double check that question. I know that if you opt out, you can decide to opt back in in future um years. But let me just double check that question. If you opt in and decide to pay it for a hundred percent, um can you?
Not to opt out, but can we change the percentage next? Like, let's say for the first year, we pay a hundred percent. Let's say for the first year we pay a hundred percent because we don't wanna add an extra burden to the employees. With the understanding that the second year we don't pay fifty.
So the city's decision to pay or, uh, some or all of the employees' portion of these premiums. That's really a, that's a budgetary decision of council, and so I think in future years, if you didn't want to pay one hundred percent, then you could just budget for. Less and, um. That would.
Christian is, yeah, Councilmember Larson, Trish is correct. The answer is yes, we can choose how much we subsidize each year.
Would that be a compromise to everybody that the first year we agreed to pay a hundred percent? So we're not adding a benefit and then telling them they have to pay for it with the understanding that we would revisit it?
Well, I would say we're not adding the benefit and telling them to pay for it to state that that. We're looking for ways maybe to, to, to help with that. I would say this, I would rather go the opposite direction. I know it sounds counterintuitive. But I hate to, in the second year, take something away that we gave in the first year. Um, that would make me uncomfortable, so. Um. I mean, I, I appreciate the attempt at a, at a compromised position. I, I just wouldn't be comfortable with that. Okay, again, I'm gonna say I, I would like for us to table, uh, this, and actually, we don't have to, we don't have to. A motion or then we just have to agree, uh, that we will reconsider this at the next city council meeting.
I agree to reconsider this for next council.
Yeah, I guess about twenty minutes.
You, you did, thank you. Okay.
For the minute, are we going to, are, are you going to reconsider the resolution for opting out?
No. Well, we're, we're gonna reconsider a motion, you know, we're gonna, we're going to consider a motion at the next city council meeting. Relative to opting in in this program. Yep, that's my understanding. Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, back to business, Christiana. You've already given us the explanation that you had. Have we heard any more?
I have not been able to reach the building official, so I do, and I've reviewed the materials that she provided to us. At the outside of this process, and I do not believe that I have located an answer in those materials. So. We are still where we are before we moved on, on further down on the agenda.
Okay, I appreciate that. Uh, so we have a clear answer on the international fire code, but not on the national residential code. I'm. I'm assuming it's just an assumption, uh, that there is a clear explanation for the difference between the four inches and the six inches. Uh, and, and, um, but I don't really know.
And the exception.
The exception of six inches. Um. My, my, my assumption is that if we were to get an explanation, it would be clear to us. Um. So throwing caution to the wind, I would suggest that we can pass, um. These twenty eighteen codes, uh, with the change to international fire code nine oh seven dash two dash one dash one. Um. As recommended. What does the rest of the council think?
And the item in question is the exception, the exception matches the IFC, so. Just move ahead.
Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion, please. Somebody be bold.
What is it that we're changing?
Um. IFC regulation nine zero seven. IFC nine zero seven dash two dash one dash one.
I, I got it, um. Councilmember Luna Lea moves to adopt resolution number seven, series of twenty twenty-two in ordinance, repealing and. Reinciting, uh, chapters fifteen point oh four, fifteen point oh eight, fifteen point twelve. And fifteen point sixteen of the city of Leadville municipal code to adopt by reference of twenty eighteen. International Building Code, the twenty eighteen International Residential Code and the twenty eighteen. International Mechanical Code, the twenty eighteen International Plumbing Code, the twenty eighteen. International Fuel and Gas Code, the twenty eighteen International Existing Building Code. The twenty twenty National Electrical Code, the twenty eighteen International Energy Conservation Code. And the twenty eighteen International Fire Code, making specific amendments thereto and providing penalties. For violations therefore of, on second reading with the amendment, uh, with the changes made to IFC. Nine oh seven dash two dash one dash one.
Hold on a second.
As a point of discussion, uh, Chris John, do you feel like you have that, that change for the IFC captured?
Yes, and if I have any questions, I can reach out to Fire Marshall Boyle.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember for Jethi?
Yes.
Councilmember Grant?
Yes.
Councilmember Luna Lea?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Lou Reston?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Green?
Yes.
Mayor Laughton?
Yes. Thank you. If you're willing to know, I lost track, sorry. Public. There it is. I buried it. Um. It's right now we have the public meetings planner, uh, oh, well, nevermind, I'll do that as part of the meeting before. Uh, public meetings planner, anything on the public meetings planner anybody wants to add or subtract? Or comment on?
Um, I will not be here on, uh, twenty.
Okay.
I have my member planning.
That's going to be an interesting meeting. Well, we're reconsidering the, the opt-in.
Well, can we, can we, can we talk about that? Because I think that's important to have everybody.
I, I do too. I mean, I don't, that's why I was, kind of. How should you phone work in these days?
Well, maybe we can make it until, uh, councilmembers or it's in big.
Regular.
Pardon me?
The following.
Yeah, I, I don't have any problem with that.
And, and I guess the reason why I'm, I'm, obviously, uh, it's not just this part of this family piece. Is what is the overall package we're trying to provide to our employees, right? It, it seems that perhaps we're maybe doing a little piecemeal, which is. What I'm a little nervous about, like, okay, we're gonna do this, we're gonna opt in, we're gonna pay a hundred percent. Oh, and we're gonna give them. The, this, that, the other thing. What is the package that we're trying to create for employees in the City of Leadville? And maybe then I would feel more comfortable understanding. If that pain, you know, paying a hundred percent of the, of the, of the family, their portion of the family. Uh, premium would be more palatable. I mean, I'd prefer knowing what, what we're looking at as a, as a package.
I think we, we could request, uh, you know, from staff, uh, that a brief presentation of, you know. What, what have we been doing? And what are we proposing in twenty twenty-three in terms of benefits packages? Is that what you'd like?
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be, that would be on the October fourth meeting, okay?
I'll be here.
Me too. Alright, thank you.
I won't have you here on the forty seventh.
Okay. I will be gone the eleventh of October, okay? The fourth still looks good.
I'm likely also to be gone on the eleventh. It's not for sure yet, but I suspect I will.
Thank you.
Hey, I, um, could be gone on the eleventh as well, um, but may be able to, uh, be virtual, but it would not be in person on the eleventh.
Well, the eleventh is a work session.
Okay.
Um, still, three city councilors basically know a work session is still another great thing, but we'll deal with that. We always knew the eleventh was iffy anyway. So that may be a, a conversation we'll have in the city council meeting. Uh, anything else on the, on the meetings planner? Okay.
So the thirteenth, we're doing, uh, a paper. Visitation.
Yes.
And then we're having a work session on Santa Fe.
That's it.
And. Somebody's buying.
Somebody better buy something.
Oh, and I was gonna say, under dietary restrictions to that, Lori? Uh, my diet is soy-free. Just to let you know. Thank you.
I will make sure high mountain pies doesn't add any soy sauce to your pizza.
Uh, mayor's report real quick. All I have, I got this letter today. It, it's bizarre. I'm gonna read it to you because I, I, I wanna share it. This is from Saint Joseph's, uh, Holy Family Parry. Um, dear members of Leadville City Council, I hope this finds you doing well. We would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support at Saint Joseph's Cemetery. And all the help previously provided. At this time is with sadness that we must make you aware of our present situation specifically, that we have major expenditures. On our two churches that need to be addressed. For this reason, we can no longer afford to maintain the cemetery and or develop new sites. Therefore, no new sites will be developed after our present ten to fifteen sites are sold. This cemetery has been open to all people regardless of the faith or social status. Due to these reasons, we respectfully suggest that the City of Leadville consider building a cemetery in the near future. Once again, we greatly appreciate your support during these past years. Uh, just thought I would share that one with you.
Typical, uh, cemeteries are public and not private?
Uh, I have no idea and, uh, probably, yeah, it's not something I really would like to consider. But I, I did, I, nice letter, um, not quite sure where they're coming from, but I just thought you. That's it. Any council reports?
Uh, yes, I'll make it quick. I am saying a full circle. After all, they opened a new housing position. It makes sense. I'm already doing housing everywhere you possibly can in Leadville. I might as well. Throw myself at. So I'll be there.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is there, can I?
Yeah, please.
Is there a conflict of interest of you being on the housing before, aboard and being third ca- housing?
Not necessarily any case that involves directly working with a person. Who may be, for example, interested in purchasing a home. I didn't excuse myself of, uh, which. That you trust in me that I will do that if I do work with a client closely.
You know, we went across this, it's a small town. We, we talked about it before, not having a complex interest would be. The most unlikely of all possibilities, uh, but we have to deal with it, you know, when it happens.
Um, and as always, I will make everyone know what's going on, the situation, and if they're okay with me excluding or not excluding myself. Um, as with any future full circle things related to the city anyways.
Thank you. Um, alright, Shannon, Dana, any council reports? I love it. Um. Any, any final comments? Look at this, nine o'clock. The city council is adjourned. I'm amazed. I honestly thought we'd get to a friend. I did.